All right, we're going to get started here, folks. We have the camera is rolling. The light is on and I apologize, we don't have enough chairs for everyone. We didn't know there was going to be this big of a crowd, but welcome everyone to the your Albany City Council meeting. And would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, could we get a roll call, please?
Bolson.
Here.
Sykes.
You.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Ellen.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
And first on the agenda is a scheduled proclamation. And this is for Four Chaplains Sunday, February 3rd, 2019. Whereas, February 3rd, 2019 will mark the 76th anniversary of the sinking of the troop ship US AT Dorchester, which carried to the deaths four US Army chaplains who stood united in prayer as the ship went down. And whereas, these four chaplains from diverse religious backgrounds gave their own life jackets to four soldiers and thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others. And whereas, the heroic deeds of chaplains Lieutenant George L. Fox, Lieutenant Alexander D. Good, Lieutenant Johnny P. Washington, and Lieutenant Clark V. Poling and their combined act of supreme devotion and sacrifice for American liberty and human freedom will be an inspiring and ever-shining example of real brotherhood for all time to the people of the world. And whereas, we must all see to it that their supreme sacrifice, along with that of all servicemen and women to the common cause of human freedom and justice for all, shall not have been in vain. Now therefore, I share in Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim February 3rd, 2019 as Four Chaplains Sunday in Albany, Oregon, and call upon all citizens to commemorate the day with appropriate observances. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 23rd day of January 2019. Okay, thank you, folks. So what we have for scheduled business this evening is a public hearing. And with that, I do know, I think there's some folks here for the soccer team, but it might, could be possibly an hour before we get to that agenda item. So I think I did tell Mr. Hoffman that if everybody wanted to wait that long, if not, I can be able to schedule everybody for the next meeting and do a special presentation. So that is up to you, but we welcome you to be able to watch your city government in action this evening. And I think it might be informative for the kids, too, to be able to view it. But thank you. Okay. So next is a reopened public hearing. So on tonight's agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding text amendments to the Albany Development Code related to accessory dwelling units as described in planning files DC 0418 and DC 0518. The applicant is City of Albany Community Development Department, Planning Division. I call to order this legislative public hearing at 7:20 PM. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the city clerk. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards. Staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code which you believe to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the City Council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. At this time, I call for the staff report. David?
Good evening, folks. David Martino, planning manager. First of all, we have a set of the review criteria that's in hot pink color over there on the table if anybody would like one and don't have one currently. I'd like to first start out with saying that there haven't been any changes to either one of these options since your last hearing on this back in November. But what I'd like to do is to start off first with describing what the current standards are right now in the Development Code. So in the Albany Development Code, accessory dwelling units are regulated as an addition to or within a primary residence or in a detached building built before February 1st, 1998. Another stipulation in our code says that one of the residences must be owner-occupied, no more than 50% gross floor area or 750 square feet, whichever is less. There needs to be three off-street parking spaces to serve both residences. All required building permits must be obtained. The unit would need to meet setback standards. And detached units have a maximum height of 24 feet. So in the two packages that you have tonight, the difference is this. The first one in DC 04-18 is merely adopting the minimum state standard. So nothing else really changes in this section of the code except that it would allow a detached accessory dwelling unit outright wherever a detached single-family residence is allowed. That's the essence of the state minimum standard right there. The other one, the more enhanced version, that one would regulate other things. It would not only allow the detached units, but it would also expand the floor area up to 900 square feet or up to 75% of the primary dwelling. There would also still be a three-space parking lot requirement, however, one of those spaces could be accommodated on the street. As far as owner occupancy, the discretionary standards would remove that requirement for either unit. And design requirements apply, but only in those zones where there are mixed-use zones where accessory dwelling units have to have materials compatible with the primary residence. Other than that, that's the comparison between the two ordinances or packages here before you tonight. And with that, I'll wrap it up unless you have some questions.
Okay, any questions, David? All right, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now be taking public testimony as I recognize you. Please come to the podium, state your full name and address, spell your last name, please, and make any comments you may have for the council's consideration. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe it and then present it to the city clerk. All right, so our public hearing is open and so we will be taking testimony. Does anyone wish to testify on the proposed amendments? And let me see how many have signed up. So we did have some. So what I'm going to do is call who signed up first. And after we go through the list, then if there is anybody else that would also like to comment, then I'll just have you raise your hand and then you can be able to come forward. So, okay. First on the list is Jeffrey Evans. And also, we do have, let's see, we do have quite a bit here that do want to testify. If we can sort of kind of keep our comments, you know, in a very timely manner, other words, we want to make sure everybody gets a chance to be able to speak, so, this evening.
Meaning you want me to be efficient?
Yes. Thank you.
My name's Jeffrey Evans and I live at 1899 Martin Avenue, Southwest. Spelled E-V-A-N-S. I only heard of this afternoon, so I have to admit, I haven't looked at all 190-some-odd pages.
Jeffrey, can you move the microphone closer to?
Is that better?
Sorry, it's not a great microphone.
What I was able to discern is there is no indication that an assessment was done regarding whether or not the proposal complied with the Fair Housing Act, especially with respect to discriminatory zoning against people with disabilities. And that's something that really needs to be addressed because I see some problems with a separate accessory dwelling. If I noticed it correctly, there's a Florida area ratio that the unit can be no larger than 50% the size of the existing home on the property, which could render it impossible to design that kind of dwelling to be accessible to somebody, let's say, in a wheelchair or using a scooter. And that is critical, especially if it's going to be a rental structure, because rental structure is required, a certain number of the rental structures are required to be compliant with respect to the Fair Housing Act amended standards. Another issue that we get into, especially in providing for parking, is that there are certain parking requirements associated with those of us who use lift-acquire vans. And I've seen a lot of the town, and I can almost guarantee you that there's insufficient parking available on single-family lots or on public streets. And the city would really need to develop a mechanism by which somebody could request that parking space on the street in front of the location be designated for someone with a disability. There would be a question regarding access to rights of way, for example sidewalks, and the ability to get to, let's say, transit stops and the like. So I didn't see any of that, and admittedly, it was a very cursory assessment that I did. But I think those are major deficiencies that could affect the extent to which this is defensible in a public court. Now, Mayor, you mentioned to me beforehand about relying on the state to have considered that. I wouldn't recommend that because we did not have, Oregon did not have an ADA-compliant building code until January 2014. So every structure before that technically doesn't comply with the federal standards, which a number of businesses are realizing is problematic for them. So, any questions?
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jeffrey.
How was that? Was that brief?
That was great, thank you. All right, next is Ray Kupczynski, former councillor.
Mayor, we should probably remind him what the rules are.
Yeah.
He hasn't done this for six or eight years.
He hasn't been on that side.
Test, test, test.
Dias.
Mayor, council, city staff, it feels a little different to be out here on this side of the day. It's been probably about eight years since I've sat in this particular seat, so bear with me as I try and relearn how to warm the seat. I believe my position is quite well-known. It has been, still is. I'm strongly in favor of the enhanced version that you have on part of your package. I emailed you, or emailed Marilyn and passed on what my comments are, along with other information. I'm not going to read it 100% verbatim, that would take too long. But I have two things that I want to really strongly try and do. One is to refute some hyperbole from Cameron Settlemeyer, who's been on newspaper, in the newspaper with a letter to the editor. He's sent an email that I received. He's been here on camera, and I thought some of his statements needed to be refuted. So one of his first comments was, "While I'm not against all accessory dwelling units, the City Council must carefully consider the repercussions of modifying the ADU requirements." Okay, that's exactly what the city staff, planning commission, and the state have done to this point. And his quote is, "I'm not against all ADUs. That suggests to me that they're okay, but not in my backyard." Question, comment number three was, "ADUs will decimate the character of Albany's single-family neighborhoods, historic or not." I have asked several people, multiple, several times, "Please show me a single, any, ADU built in the last five years, any place in Oregon that has materially damaged a neighborhood in any way." No one has provided me with a single example. Obviously, said decimation of neighborhoods has not happened. Do folks really recall the famous broadcast from the Hindenburg disaster? Oh, the humanity! No, the sky has not fallen and will not fall because of any purpose-built ADUs. Another quote, "Buildable land is becoming increasingly expensive, and outside developers are going to be more than eager to buy existing single-family properties to turn into multifamily for profit." Then they flip and resell and run. It will also allow out-of-state landlords to add ADUs to rental houses. They make their quick buck without ever caring about how it will ever affect the neighborhood. Well, these outside developers and outside state landlord, out-of-state landlords are going to swoop down and pillage poor little Albany. Oh, the humanity! So Cameron implies it's only these bad out-of-town folks that would cause the problem, and I'm inferring that he would be happy if local developers and local landlords did the exact same thing. Another quote, "I find it rather disingenuous with some of the councillors who said that ADU is not an issue because it's not happening much." Well, duh, that is because we have the protection of owner occupation and maximum-size limitation. The real constraint is not the owner occupancy nor the size. It is because of the existing building codes for setbacks and, much more importantly, the cost of building one. Some folks have decried that we'd become like Portland with ADUs. Well, Portland cannot even get folks to build them, even by eliminating 100% of the SDCs to do so. The inherent cost of building one is also a barrier to them, and it will also be here in Albany. And recently, Hasso mentioned in passing in one of his columns that there'd been up to five ADUs that had recently been proposed and are in process of working that had cost from $40,000 to $125,000. That ain't cheap, folks. Cameron also stated, "Later on, when the owner sells, it may become two rental units, but the owner occupation requirement will greatly reduce the abuse of the system by developers and real estate agents." Even existing codes do not preclude a local developer or a local real estate agent in engaging in free enterprise, and that's exactly what it is. Here's a couple of scenarios that also he mentioned that I would like to address. Scenario A, an old home on a decent-sized lot needs restoration. And if sitting in a single-family, family zone before the code changed, there's good odds it would eventually be fixed up. Really, by what statistic says this will happen? And exactly who would do the fixing up? The new owner, a local contractor, or a developer? But now the developer buys house, tears it down, builds two houses on the lot. One of the houses is a 900-square-foot ADU, the other is a larger-size house. Well, let's see, the cost of tearing down the existing house, building a brand-new one and an ADU, regardless of the size, will not be cheap. And now the said developer will be trying to sell them at market value, so the two units will not be, will definitely not be inexpensive. In addition, the new owner of the house could do exactly the same thing. It wouldn't even have to be a developer, quote-unquote. Another quote, "By the time you add garages and parking, there's not much of the lot left that looks like a single-family neighborhood it used to." Okay, if this new design can fit within the current zoning setbacks, all is good. Although you cannot add, you cannot be adding a garage to an ADU, you can add an ADU on top of a garage. I get that you do not like state law, but there it is. To me, these arguments are all coming across as pure NIMBY, not in my backyard. Another quote, "The developer sells, the realtor makes their buck from it being sold twice, and they both laugh all the way to the blank, all the way to the bank." To me, that's nonsensical on face value. The developer's purchased the property at fair-market value and spent a huge amount of money via number two above and resells it. That a realtor makes money on the sales is a pure red herring. But now the new house and ADU will cost the buyer a huge amount more than what was originally there. It sure doesn't pencil out, especially if the new owner wants to turn both units into rents. New owner could not begin to cover the mortgage cost with rent. All of this scenario does not require a developer, it could happen via the existing owner, too. Here's scenario B, a ranch house is in excellent, is in excellent shape in an excellent neighborhood. Out-of-state landlord buys property and turns it into a rental. Cameron is trying to paint a dark dystopian picture of out-of-state landlords hogwash, so Cameron would be perfectly happy if a local landlord or a current owner of the property did exactly the same thing. Another quote, "Trying to maximize income, out-of-state landlord turns the unit into a duplex by adding an attached ADU to it." Cameron is again dreaming of weird scenarios, but a local landlord or the current owner of the property could do exactly the same thing. Another different, and to me, a perfectly acceptable scenario would be, current owner adds an ADU, attached or detached. The owner has older parents or relatives live in the ADU. Later on, the parents die in a very, let's say, in a very short timeframe. The owners have now aged and decide to downsize by moving out of the house into the ADU and then renting the larger property. Further down the road, the owner dies and the property is sold by the heirs because they have their own homes and they have no intention of becoming landlords. The new owners are afraid to use it as a home, use it as a home with ADU, or rent one or rent both and live elsewhere. Perfectly reasonable scenario to my mind. And there is no way Albany will ever have occupation police to determine how many folks are living in a home or rental. You go ahead and knock on someone's door and ask them to show you their papers for ownership or ask to count how many folks are living there. Good luck. As a councillor, a constituent sent me an email asking for some very specific information about current code and ADUs. I passed it on to city staff and as it was deeper into the minutia than I had. And city planner David Martin responded with some very erudite, concise, and insightful information. You have it in your paperwork or electronic that I've given you. His comments are in blue. I think they're absolutely excellent and should be required reading from everybody. Okay, I'm not going to read all of that. And so that takes me down to the last section. I'm not going to read all of it either. Is, I had a conversation recently with a councillor and mentioned that normally in the course of our tenure up there, many, many times, all of us will have experienced votes that go against where our wishes were, four to two, whatever. And most of them, we always just say, "Okay, suck it up." We go and we move on the next day and we go on to the next problem. And I asked the councillor, I said, "In this particular issue with the ADUs, had the mayor not vetoed it, what would have happened? Would have you just moved on?" Or the sun will still come in the morning. And the answer I got, I strongly inferred was, "Yeah, probably." So I basically stated some pretty harsh comments in my information down below, which you all have up to the dais. I'm not going to read it, but I will say forthrightly, Mayor, you and I have agreed, 98% of the time, right down the line, there's only been two serious issues that you and I have been diametrically opposed. This is one of them, you know what the other one is, okay? I give you chops for standing by your position, okay? Kudos to you for that. On the other hand, because of what's happened and how it's gone down, I honestly say and fundamentally say, "You own the problem." You asked me, "Why can't the other side come up with a compromise?" They've tried. I tried, another councillor has tried, it's gone nowhere. It's your problem because of what's happened, and I fundamentally disagree with that process, how it's gone down. I'm still in favor of the enhanced version, so I'm open for any comments if necessary.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ray. Okay, David Abar?
My comments will be from the public. I wasn't going to talk on this topic.
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
Okay. Just remind me on when we get towards that or put your, raise your hand up when we get to business from the public. Okay. And Steve Hayman.
And before you start, Steve, I know there's a lot of folks that were, that haven't been here at the previous meetings. We've had several meetings over the accessory dwelling units. Go ahead and be seated. And so what it is, is the state came through and made a requirement that all cities that are over 2,500 in population have to re-allow accessory dwelling units, basically another house in any single-family neighborhood. So somebody could have a single-family home and your neighbor or yourself could put another house in the backyard. So the question to it is, our existing code was 750 square feet, or there's also an option that we're discussing is 900 square feet. You can also add a garage on to that. And then it would be our existing code was one parking space that you had to have off-street for the ADU, but what's been discussed is not, is taken away that requirement. So it'd be on-street parking. And then the other one that we're not agreeing on is owner occupied. So if you have it owner occupied, then you've got an owner on-site overlooking the house that would be the rental in the backyard. So that's, we're not denying the ADUs, we're required by the state, but this is just kind of coming up with, how do we want the ADUs to be in our community? So that's the question that we're looking at. Okay, thank you. Yes, Steve.
My name's Steve Hayman. I live at 1125 First Albany. Lived there for the last 42 years, owned it for the last 38 years, and I'm experiencing the growth that's already being said is slow. We've had the house on the corner behind us subdivided the backyard, and we were told that they were going to build a small bungalow for their mother, and now we have a two-story house looking, dominating our backyard and the house in between, all coordinated through the city. And unfortunately, my neighbor gave an easement to allow those people to have a sewer hookup and initiated this whole cascading effect. And I guess I should pass on the last little note that when my neighbor showed it to the new owner, he was hoping they would reduce some of the window space looking in his backyard, and the new owner said, simply, "You're lucky I didn't make it three stories." And that's kind of the other side of the coin from what Ray was just talking about. I've lived there this long, I've enjoyed several generations of the neighborhood changing and who lives there, how it was handled. I'm trying to be a, originally a young person, moved in with children, enjoyed having backyard, place for the kids to play. And that is changing quickly. Every corner seems to be getting a new apartment or a garage turned into an apartment, and so far, it's fine. My problem is, is with removing all of the restrictions on it, it's really going to turn into a circus, in my opinion. I mean, great for people selling property and building buildings, but I'd much prefer to see it constantly being rolled over and improved as single-family dwellings by and large, with the few necessary additions for families to do have a reason for it. I want to thank the mayor and Dick Olson because they seem to be sharing my opinions. And I want to make a momentary comment about last December 5th, I believe it was, I was here at the council meeting, and I was rather shocked by the behavior of a lot of people and the aggressiveness. And I heard things that I personally wanted to jump up and disagree with, but I was under the impression I couldn't since the conversation was over by the public. Enough said, but what I would very much like to see is a little more counseling, a little more slowing down of this action. I think it's reasonable to do the bare minimum the state requires, but I see no reason to turn it into a free-for-all. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Steve.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Fitchett, 1140 10th Avenue, Southwest. Thank you to the mayor and the council for allowing me the opportunity to come up here and speak this evening. I would like to ask the council and the mayor to move forward with the amended changes to the ADU plan, allowing them to be 900 square feet, not required on-site parking space. I, where I live on 10th Street, there are multiple ADUs on my street. I do not feel whatsoever that they have changed the makeup of the neighborhood, the feel of the neighborhood. One of them, they're older, they're grandfathered in, they both sit in a backyard. There's an alley behind them. One of them has access to the alley, the other does not. It's a sidewalk, a walkway up to the It's a sidewalk, a walkway up to the city sidewalk. The largest of them is 860 square feet. It's a two-bedroom, one-bath unit with laundry facilities. On a slightly larger lot than many in my neighborhood, it's 6,300 square feet, and most of the lots are in the neighborhood of 5,000 square feet. There is no extra parking associated with this ADU, and that has not been an issue in our area. I would argue that the recent garage that I built in my backyard and the curb cut and driveway that I made was a bigger issue for parking in our neighborhood than their ADU that does not have any off-street parking set aside for it. There is a Dodge duly pickup truck in my neighborhood that has some exhaust issues, and that's much more of a disturbance in my neighborhood than any of the accessory dwelling units, if you guys would choose to take that up. I do believe a large portion of the mayor's hesitation and her vetoing the council's four-two decision repeatedly comes from the fear that a 900-square-foot ADU would be a three-bedroom unit and would increase the number of people in a neighborhood. While that is possible, I would say it's unlikely. I'm currently building three-bedroom rentals. They're 1,455 square feet. I have 12 units that are two-bedroom, one-bath units. They range in size from 878 square feet to 1,040 square feet. The larger ones are two stories, which I imagine that most ADUs that would be slightly larger would need to be strictly based on site planning, setbacks, so on and so forth. And the stairs end up taking up a significant amount of space, so I would like you to keep that in mind, that as you go up, you need a little more square footage in order to make that happen. I think the ADUs allow for individuals to earn a second income stream, and whether that is, I'm speaking mainly in regards to owner occupied, although I don't think that it needs to be owner occupied. Buying a non-owner occupied investment property requires a 25% down payment, and interest rates are typically, typically a half percentage point higher. For many folks, this would make it unaffordable, and it's a large chunk of money to save up. If it is owner occupied, there's an ability to refinance or take out a secured line of credit, a HELOC on the said property, and the cost of money and therefore the feasibility of owning a rental is, brings into this fear of possibility for most homeowners. There are many programs nowadays that will allow you to pull up to 95% of the equity out of your house. It is a slight, slightly higher interest rate, but the cost of doing so on a secured, a secured line against your own house is much more feasible than a full second mortgage. I also think that if you look at many other cultures, they have generational living in place. I do think that we will have to trend that way at some point. We've got a large number of baby boomers who are aging and not all the housing that would be convenient for them and others. I envision, I see the home that my folks live in, my father's 79 and my mother's 64, and it's a pretty good size. It's about 1,900 square feet, and at some point, they will not be living there, and I hope that they have another place to call their own before they go to some sort of assisted living facility. I have a hard time imagining them in a 750-square-foot space after fortunately being used to something much larger in their days. I myself live in a 966-square-foot home. I feel fortunate to have that. It's sufficient space for me. However, I can't imagine there being a third bedroom crammed into that space. It's a two-bedroom home. In a day and age of retirement being further out of grasp for many people, I believe that a functional ADU, which would be allowing them to be bigger than 750 square feet, can be a vessel of income to help retirement be achievable for most middle-class families. I am also a builder and sit on the board of the Willamette Valley Home Builders. I have never been approached to build an ADU in this area. I don't know if I plan to have that be a part of my business model. Currently, it is not. I have helped build an ADU in Portland for my sister. She works in a little bit of politics and campaign management, and it has really afforded her some extra income that has been very beneficial to her that she may not have been able to access otherwise. I believe that is it. If anyone has any questions.
You said there are, quote, "several" ADUs in your, in your area, and there isn't any extra parking for them. Do you know if, if they all have cars or any of them? I guess, is there a difference between the ones who do have a car and the ones who don't have a car, or do you have that information?
I can think of, there's one that is directly across the street from me, that they do not, they do have a car. It's a modest car. It's a Honda Fit, and so it's maybe 15 feet long, so it does not take up an extreme amount of space on the street. There's another one who has a Chevy Blazer, not the like 80s style, but the 90s, 2000s that are not incredibly large. And the other one has one car as well. They're not quite as close to my house, so I can't speak to that as accurately.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm only glad you're a builder. I would like to know if you can swag, you know, give me a guess of what would cost for system development charges, building, foundation, what's something like that run in Albany, say 850 square foot?
So I mainly build for myself, rentals to keep. You could argue I'm one of those out-of-state developers, although I happen to live in your town. And so my budgetary numbers do not include a lot of labor because I'll do a lot of that myself. Often, people are building for clients in the neighborhood of $135 a square foot. That's typically not including SDCs. That's, that's for a pretty nice home. I'm going to build cheaper because I'm using different materials because they're rentals. So I think some of that might come down for ADUs. Although the accessory dwelling units that I've walked through in Portland, a lot of those are owner occupied somewhere on the property, you know, whether it's in the ADU in the back or in the front, and they're typically have a higher level of finish because there's maybe a little bit more pride in that because they do occupy one of the units. And accessory dwelling units will be more expensive to build per square foot. The smaller square footage you have, you still have to have a bathroom, you still have to have a kitchen. That's expensive square footage to build in comparison to a bedroom that is likely going to have a carpet floor, you know, no appliances, no plumbing necessary. Also, the trickiness of fitting it into a lot and doing less damage to a landscape and tighter areas to fit equipment often drives the cost up as well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Matthew. Next is Cameron Settlemeyer.
My name is Cameron Settlemeyer, S-E-T-T-L-E-M-E-R, at the 237th Avenue Southwest in the beautiful Hackelman, Montezone District.
Get a little closer to the way.
Tip it down. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Cameron.
So I really am not against all the ADUs. What I'm really concerned about is their impact on the fabric of the neighborhood, the long-term consequences of an ADU. If you build an ADU, it's probably going to be there for a long time. And there's where I feel the owner occupation is a key portion of that because owner occupied means they're probably going to be a lot more vested in the neighborhood and how they fit in. Another thing is, I've been hearing that, oh, ADUs, they're, you know, there's nothing that's really coming up or it's already there that's causing a problem. Actually, next month, Landmarks is taking up a review of a demolition of a historic lodge in Montez district so they can build an ADU. So that's already starting. There's already people taking a look at this and planning to make their moves based on what kind of rules and regulations and how tight it is. So that's why looking at these regulations really does matter. Increasing the cost of land is driving the developers to look at ways to maximize their profit because land is a fixed cost, and as that goes higher and higher, then they're looking at different opportunities to maximize the value of the land as the land goes up in price, which I believe will continue to do that, given that the secret about how good it is to live in the Willamette Valley is no longer a secret. Concerning the effects, you know, having a house in an ADU can have up to 60% of lot coverage. By the time you add off-street parking to it, you don't have a lot of landscaping left. You don't have a lot of yards to play in anymore. That doesn't mean it's always going to be that high, but it means it can be up to that high. As far as my comments concerning, you know, out-of-state developers, sure, you know, there's, there's local developers that could be in it to make, to make some money. Local developers are also generally more in tune with their community. Local businessmen, you know, being involved with the community. But the thing is, real estate's becoming more and more of just a commodity. It's just something to be traded on the stock market. A lot of the investment funding is now being driven by Asian speculators, and that drives them to look at places where they can find locations to build, to make profit. So that's kind of regarding my concern to foreign investors, out-of-state investors. Removing owner occupied protection for accessory dwelling units, which is not required by state law, will forever change the character of Albany's single-family zoning districts, all single-family districts that have lot sizes over a tenth of an acre. Once the safety check is removed, it does allow outside developers, locals well, but especially outside, to buy a property, build an ADU, and then sell it. Or if the property is distressed, tear it down and build two houses instead of one house with an ADU of 900 square feet, with an even larger main house. And again, the 900 square feet versus 750 is going to incentivize investors to do this because then you're talking at least a two-bedroom house instead of a one-bedroom house. This zoning gift to developers will allow them to buy, build, and flip, will certainly save the long-term neighbors. They take their money on to the next project without caring about the long-term consequences to the neighborhood because it's not their neighborhood. Despite the building, real estate lobbyists claim the ADUs increase affordable housing, the opposite often happens. Why? Because when they build, they build to maximize their dollar. How do you do that? You build as large as you can and as high-end or classy as you can. When bare land is available on new lots here, do they build small entry-level homes? No, most new homes are built to be above the price the average citizen can afford. Why? To maximize profit. So why would a builder build an affordable ADU when they can build a classy one? What ends up happening is an existing home that would have been affordable to either buy or rent and get torn down, two high-end homes are put in its place, one under the guise of being an ADU, and neither are affordable, but both adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood. A neighborhood that was never planned or designed for such a change in density. Portland is a case study of the damage that can be done under the guise of creating more affordable housing while actually decreasing the available, availability of entry-level homes. Smaller homes on medium-sized lots are being torn down by the hundreds each year, and in their place are either larger homes or luxury apartments. Gone is the affordable house, and instead you now have 16,000 vacant luxury apartments in Portland no one can afford. The speculation in the real estate market has reached such a fever pitch that even in Albany, developers are looking for distressed properties that they can buy for the land. They're not interested in restoring existing houses to provide affordable housing. They want to maximize profit with classy row houses, whatever they can get away with in pursuit of greed. If you care about affordable housing, keep the size limit to 750 square feet, and most importantly, keep the owner occupied protections. Owner occupied means the ADUs are built by people invested in their neighborhoods. It also means units are less likely to be built for maximized profit, but rather are more likely to be built for their affordable original purpose, which is an affordable in-law unit. Code changes need to be looked at, at the Albany Comprehensive Plan for Guidance. The City of Albany Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Two, states in Goal Five, "Open spaces, scenic and historic areas, and natural resources." Quote, "The goal is to protect Albany's historic resources and utilize and enhance those resources for Albany residents and visitors." Under Implementation Methods, Item Number Eight says, "Developer view criteria which would discourage those zone changes resulting in increased pressure to replace historic structures with more intense land uses." And that's exactly what's going to be happening in front of Landmarks next month. Not only is removing owner occupied increasing the size of ADUs in violation of Albany's Comprehensive Plan, it will have an even greater negative effect on single-family properties outside of the historic overlay districts. Changing the zoning is a bait-and-switch tactic for single-family homeowners that moved and established themselves into a single-family neighborhood only to have their zoning protections removed. Quote, "No on DC 518 is a Trojan horse gift to greed real estate speculators, and it violates Albany's Comprehensive Plan."
Question?
Uh huh. Richard.
Sir, you mentioned Asian folks coming in, into the market in a big way. Were you talking about generally in the United States or in Oregon or here in Albany?
I, I'm not aware specifically in Albany. I know they're here on the West Coast. It's, it's basically market funds that drive this, and then they look to go out and invest wherever they can.
Okay, just, just so I understand that. It's, of course, this is just in Albany. This is not anywhere but Albany, because that's all we can do.
Correct. Yeah, you cannot change outside of Albany, yes.
Let me ask you a question. How many young people have you talked to about this?
Have I talked to?
Yes.
Can't say that I've talked to a lot of young people about this.
I talk to a lot of young people because I'm new to this whole arena. And one of the things that I've found from them is that they can't afford to live here because there's no affordable housing, right?
Correct.
So if their parents have the property to build them a 900-square-foot ADU, you don't want that, to keep those kids here, their money here, their jobs here?
If it's owner occupied, that fits within the owner occupied rule.
So, so I move out of my house, build an ADU, I rent, I get a property manager, they manage my property to my standards. That's not okay with you?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
I said, I have a house. I don't have the space for an ADU, but say I have a problem with an ADU. I have the resource to build an ADU next to my house, and I take, I move to California. I get a property manager that maintains my property for me to my standards, and that's not okay with you?
It's a slippery slope to do.
Kind of a point of order, though. We're kind of in the public hearing phase, so we don't want any sort of deliberations, and it's not really a debate forum.
Ask him a question. Answer the question.
So, so you can do what-if scenarios upon which it's a slippery slope because, you know, what if the neighbors don't want you building an ADU and you don't live right there as a neighbor? You know, there's, there's, there's multiple considerations to take into effect there.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Cameron. Okay, next is Chad Robinson.
Chad Robinson, 1107 10th Avenue Southwest, Albany. I think the problem that we're really grappling with is we live in a really great town in a really great state, and we've all seen the way prices have gone up for housing. These investors, be they local or out-of-state or out of the country that we're talking about, wouldn't be looking for this, and owner occupants wouldn't be looking for this if we didn't have a housing issue. I'm lucky enough to live in one of the houses with an ADU that earlier testimony referenced from Matt Fitchett. I wouldn't have bought my house if it didn't have the income of the ADU in the back. It's enabled me to sort of begin a renovation slowly on the house that I otherwise wouldn't be able to do, and when those are done, it will enable me to pay it off faster. I enjoy living in Albany because of the character of the downtown, the residences and the businesses. I've enjoyed seeing the improvement in the historic district and downtown, and I would love to see all houses with large lots. I can think of a particular house on Washington that's on almost a triple lot, and I sort of dread the day when somebody goes to build on that, but the reality is that's not my... But the reality is, that's not my house, and there's lots of people coming to Albany that need affordable housing. I think that when we limit the size of the ADUs to something around 750 square feet, that's when we might see an issue of the fabric of the neighborhoods degrading. When we allow them to be larger than we allow the sorts of situations that we're talking about, small families, single parents, parents, older generations, multi-generational housing. With the smaller units, I think we're going to see lower-income rentals, and we're going to see transitional people moving in and out, higher turnover, and that's not necessarily what we want. If the setbacks and the other regulations can allow a larger unit, I think we can attract more diversity to the individual neighborhoods. I also think that when we think about Portland and we think about the parking situation, we're ignoring the traffic situation. If we can concentrate more people closer to the downtown core and not on the other side of the bridges, with the terrible problem we have with traffic on the other side of the river getting in and out of downtown in mornings and the evenings, we're going to help ourselves out with a problem that we have no solution to yet. No one's come up with any solution for how we're going to get people across Highway 20 into downtown and out. So if we can concentrate those people closer to the downtown core where they can eat and shop, we can maybe take some of those cars and leave them in those parking spots. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next is John Robinson.
Good morning, Mayor. Well, it's okay to me. Good evening, Council Mayor. I'm John Robinson, 2500 Del Rio Court Southeast, Albany 97322. I have some handouts, so hopefully they're going around. Put these glasses out so I can read. So as you're getting those handouts, I'm a general contractor in Albany, in business 13 years now. I'm interested in ADUs for several reasons. I have clients that would like to have them built, and I'm interested in supporting private property owners' rights to do what they want with their property. After all, it's property owners who pay taxes that fund the operation of government. In 2017, I built a 1,500-square-foot addition for a client so that Mom and Dad in their 80s could live with their daughter. This type of multi-generational housing is becoming more popular with families. It solves many problems that families face with providing care for family members. ADUs are a perfect fit and solution. More and more, we provide aging-in-place solutions for people who wish to remain in their home instead of moving to a retirement quote-unquote "home" or a nursing home. I want to focus my comments tonight around four areas that I believe the mayor has expressed concern about with respect to ADUs. First would be the size of ADUs. Second would be whether to require owner occupancy. Third would be parking, and fourth would be the number of ADUs built. If you could refer to the spreadsheet that I passed out. Let me get my copy. I did some research on neighboring cities and cities with population similar to Albany. I tried to look at cities under 100,000 in population. So I made it cities like Portland, whose population is 647,000, Salem's 169,000, Eugene's 168,000. And so you'll see this list, got Albany at the top, and then the other cities are listed in rank of population. And some of these cities obviously are close to us in proximity, and some are not. If you look at the column after the population where it says maximum size, you'll see that most cities right now on ADUs are between 800 square feet and 900 square feet, with Lebanon at 1,000 square feet. There's only one city, Kaiser, that's at 750 square feet. I've been working on a design for an ADU that's 784 square feet to enable cost-effective construction. It's actually a square, a cube. A square is the most efficient form construction-wise because you don't really buy square feet, you buy linear feet. And a building that's a square versus a building that's a rectangle, on general, will be 25% less expensive to build, a square will be than a rectangle. So if you think back to a lot of the housing that was built before and you go, "Oh, it looks like a box." Well, there was a reason for that. There were cost constraints in the '50s and '60s, even through the '70s and '80s. So when you see these boxy houses, it's not because people didn't have any imagination, there's a reason for it. So my design would be at 780 square feet, and that would, the 750 square feet would limit that, so I'd like to see it raised. My preference is for the 900 square feet, is it gives owners more flexibility in the design process. It's important that with these small structures, they're designed to feel spacious. Next, you can look at the owner occupancy column. The owner occupancy column, there's only three cities that require owner occupancy compared to six cities that do not. The recommendation from the Oregon Department of Land Conservation on Senate Bill 1051 recommended against requiring owner occupancy. They cited difficulty in enforcement as one reason. I believe our planning department and our city attorney have also echoed concern over the legality of such a requirement. Those few cities that have an occupancy requirement will most likely face court challenges at some point in the near future. There's a Metro ADU zoning audit report from September of 2018. It stated, and I quote, "Eliminating owner occupancy requirements also minimizes code enforcement concerns about tenant residency status," quote, "which is not regulated for any other type of residence." This is important because when you're regulating who lives in one of the units or not, it's unprecedented. You know, you go buy a house and rent it, and they don't ask for residency. Who's going to live in it? What are you going to do with it? So it's really unprecedented. If you move on to the next column on parking, you'll see that the specific parking requirements, four cities require one onsite parking space. Two cities have no requirement for onsite parking, and three cities allow a substitution of street parking if it's available. If you look at that, you also, it's worth noting that Corvallis has no requirement for onsite parking, and yet we all know that Oregon State University, the students, the traffic there, parking can be difficult to find in parts of Corvallis, and yet they have no requirement for parking for ADUs. The March 2018 Guide on Implementing Senate Bill 1051 from the Oregon Department of Land Conservation stated, and again, I quote, "When adding an additional off-street parking space requires a new or widened curb cut, it removes existing on-street parking, resulting in no net gain of parking supply." So this simply means that when you require off-street parking or onsite parking, you're taking away a public parking space that the public could use. So, you know, with our lots being 50 feet wide, 60 feet wide by 100 foot deep, and you already have a double drive there, so say that's 20 feet or 24 feet, and you say, "Hey, I have to have another spot," so you go curb cut, you add another 10 or 12 feet, you're taking that out of somebody being able to park on the street there. So basically, you're robbing your neighbor, okay, for being able to park on the street because your neighbor is not going to be allowed to park in your driveway, right? So that's kind of my comment on that. If you look over on the last, one of the last columns there, it says permits for 2018. So in this column, I found out the actual number of permits of construction of ADUs in these cities. You'll see the first seven cities listed all had six or less permits issued for last year. Metford is on the list, they had 15 permits, and Bend had 64 permits. Now, both those cities are close to double the population of Albany. Metford's 81,000, Bend is 94.5, so they're topping close to 100. And you will also note, if you look in the other column where it says SDC fees and miscellaneous, that they encourage building ADUs by reducing their system development fees to $5,000 for an ADU. That's, I'm speaking of Bend. So Bend capped their ADUs at $5,000. Metford is currently studying an SDC waiver. The city of Springfield has already waived SDC fees until June of 2019, and they're talking about extending that. And Tigard has an SDC exemption coming, and that's why Tigard is listed as having only one ADU last year because they think that there's people that helped off from building them last year waiting for this SDC exemption because the fees can be rather large. It's important to note, too, that Tigard allows two ADUs for property. So here in Albany, we're just talking about one ADU. So I wanted to kind of, you know, give you some education about what I found out about the other cities that are around us in our area and a little bit further away that are similar in size to our city. From these numbers, I don't see a large number of ADUs being built in Albany. As a contractor, I think the price to construct an ADU is probably between $80,000 and $100,000. Financing an ADU is another problem. It's very difficult, so I don't see a lot of them being built. If you could go to the second sheet of the handout. This is a summary, this is a summary of a report from the State of Oregon DEQ from June of 2014 by Jordan Palmeri. And I have some underlying points, so I'm not going to read everything, but I'd like to address the underlying points. Number one, 80% of ADUs are used in, are in use as long-term residences. Number two, most properties with ADUs, 64%, are owner occupied, even though Portland has no requirement, they do so. Number five, since ADUs are extremely rare, ADUs have had negligible impact on parking conditions citywide. There's a bunch of numbers you can read there of how they came up with these numbers. And this is all backed up by a report. Again, this is the summary. Number seven, ADUs support the community economically through one-time construction costs averaging $78,760 per unit and ongoing property taxes estimated to average $1,134 a year. Again, remember, this $78,760 number is from this report in 2014. We'd all like to buy something at 2014 prices, but it just doesn't happen. We're five years down the road. 18% of Portland ADUs are occupied for free or extremely low cost. My guess is that these are family members, okay, and that 18%. The other 80% of ADUs rent for market rates. And last, number nine, financial gain through rental income is the most common motivation for homeowners slash developers who grade ADUs, followed by housing for a family member or helper. So you could have an ADU for a helper, and maybe your nurse lives out there, or your assistant that you need if you're aging and you want to age in place, okay? I believe those points already reinforce some of the other points that I made regarding occupancy, parking, and the use of ADUs. Now, if you go to the last page of the handout, this page, Table 3, is a table from Metro ADU Zoning Audit Report from September of 2018. So this is fairly recent data. This table documents ADU adoption rates for the 18 years from 2000 to 2018. So as you might expect, Portland has the largest number of ADUs. What's it listed on here? 2,686 over that 18-year period. If you look at the other cities, and most of these other cities are north of us, they're up around Portland, you'll see a trend or an average of around .5 per thousand. That's kind of what I'm looking at. If you look through here and you see, some of these are .18, .2, .44, .47 for Hillsborough, Tigard's .51, I mentioned Tigard before. And so if you look at those, that's the adoption rate is, the way I read that, that would mean one ADU per 2,000 people. If I extrapolate that, and we don't know how many ADUs are in Albany, we just know that there were six permits last year. So if we extrapolate that, we've got 53,000 people roughly, and if there's one ADU for every 2,000, that'd be like, what, 26 ADUs over an 18-year span? If we were average at this adoption rate, and we, I don't know if we're average because we're not keeping records of how many ADUs there are. People have testified they've got ADUs in their neighborhood, but I haven't heard anybody testify as to what the number is today in Albany. But basically, the reason I brought that data and I wanted you to look at it is that data confirms that outside of Portland, there's not a lot of ADUs being built. So to summarize, I don't see a lot of ADUs being built in Albany. I don't see a problem with the 900-square-foot limit. I don't see any problem occurring due to non-owner occupancy. I don't see any problem with parking. In short, I would recommend the council pass the original ordinance DC-05-18. I'm happy to take any questions.
That's good information. Okay, all right. Thank you, John.
All right, thank you.
Next is Holly Sears, representing WA, I think it says OR.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Holly Sears, spelled S-E-A-R-S, and I am here on behalf of the over 500 members of the Willamette Association of Realtors. And we are located at 645 Waverly Street Southeast in Albany, and we are here in support of the DC-05-18 amendments. And I won't read the written testimony that we've submitted for your review, but I do want to highlight a few points for your consideration. The overarching point that we want to make is that Albany is considered by the state to be a severely rent-burdened city, and that means that over one quarter, 27% exactly, spend more than, one, excuse me, one quarter of renter households, 27% spend more than 50% of their income on housing. So put simply, we are in a housing crisis. ADUs will not entirely solve that housing crisis, but we do see it as a tool, in a very large toolbox, of a way to alleviate that housing burden that we are seeing here and in the rest of the Willamette Valley. The only caveat to that is if we put too many restrictions on these ADUs, then they will not be able to help to alleviate the housing burden that we are seeing right now. So we would like to encourage you not to adopt the owner occupancy requirement. This requirement can be difficult to enforce, and it is burdensome for those who rely on the ADU as a source of income, especially the elderly population. If they move into an assisted-living facility and can no longer live on that property, they are not able to rent out that ADU anymore. It remains vacant, and they cannot draw on that source of rental income to help them out. We've also heard some concerns about developers coming in and buying up houses in neighborhoods, building ADUs, and then turning them both, both of those dwellings into rental units. And I recall this being a point of concern when ADUs were being considered in the city of Salem about three years ago prior to Senate Bill 1051. And I emailed the staff person who worked on the ADU proposal back then. I emailed her a couple of weeks ago, and she confirmed that, yes, that was a concern that was raised when the new law was being drafted, but those concerns have not ringed true for their city, and that law has been in effect for about two and a half years. They have no owner occupancy requirement in Salem. Their maximum square footage is 900 square feet, and they do not require any additional parking spaces for ADUs. Additionally, another point we wanted to make is that duplexes and triplexes and other multifamily occup, or excuse me, multifamily properties do not have an owner occupancy requirement. So we don't see a really good reason why ADUs should be treated any differently than those other types of properties. As for the 900 square feet, we see this as, you know, being a very reasonable size. If you look at the list of surrounding communities that have 900 square feet or larger, is their maximum size, and that's in our written testimony, so I won't go into that in any greater detail. But this also doesn't mean that all properties or all ADUs will be built to 900 square feet. This just allows the flexibility for a property owner, if they can meet the other requirements such as setbacks, to be able to build to that, to that size. It doesn't necessarily mean that all of them are going to be built to that size. And regarding the parking requirement, the gentleman just before me made the same point that I want to make, is that parking requirements, according to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, their ADU guide, have pointed out that the parking requirements are some of the biggest barriers to developing ADUs in communities. And oftentimes, when you make room for an off-street parking space, it requires a new or a widened curb cut, which then removes the existing on-street parking space, and then you have no net gain in parking supply if you do that. One final point, last year... One final point, last year, as it was mentioned earlier, only six ADU permits were applied for in the city of Albany. The cost of building an ADU is substantial and is already a huge barrier in why we're not seeing more of these built already. And so we ask that you not add to the list of burdens by creating a greater list of barriers to build ADUs in this city to allow everyone who wishes to live in this great city the opportunity to afford to do so. Thank you for the consideration of our comments.
Okay. Questions? All right. Thank you. Next is, there's just two left on the list, and then I'll open if there's anybody else.
Good evening. My name is Michael Quinn, Q-U-I-N-N, P.O. Box 2437. Some of the people, I'm kind of getting a kick out of it. I knew that this was going to happen because I've heard it for the last three weeks. I'm actually here for something else, but I thought I would put my view of finance, since I am a developer and investor and a contractor here in Albany. Everybody comes up here and talks, and opponent-wise, about greedy builders maximizing their profit. Do you realize that we have to work just like most of you in that to make a living? And that's what we do. And it's strictly market-driven and stuff. I don't know if you've kept up with, you know, what's happening in that in the United States. I think Vermont just overtook Oregon about three weeks ago as one of the destinations for retirees coming in to, you know, moving in the United States. Oregon has surpassed Florida, Arizona, and actually Albany, you'd be surprised in that. I went to a Wells Fargo seminar here back in November, and West Portland's number one, West Salem, and Albany's number three, and then it goes down to little old Florence in that, as far as people moving into those areas and stuff. Personally, in that, in my world and that, I don't think that Albany's done a very poor job with keeping up with development standards and helping people, you know, realize that they can, you know, get stuff done a little bit less burdensome. We've got a fairly decent planning crew right now. They're still a little bit young in my world. We used to have some people that were here for a long time. They left in, you know, a big hurry and that. And hopefully in that, we can, you know, try to get these people on board to try to develop stuff, because if you keep it going, you're going to be just like Corvallis, which there's a couple of you up here that's probably happy about that, because the more that you stifle growth, what happens? Supply and demand goes up. And supply and demand goes up, what goes up artificially? Your tax assessments. So people are getting taxed, and they're getting less services and stuff. We know that in Lynn County, last year, November, I use this analogy, but from George Washington to November fifteenth and that, of 2017, there was fourteen-point-one billion dollars in accessible properties in Lynn County. This November fourteenth, 2018, there was sixteen-point-two. That's almost about a sixteen percent increase in one year. That's pretty staggering, but yet, guess what? Everybody's property taxes didn't go down. Most of everybody went up. I mean, mine went up substantially in that, on our property and stuff. So I'm just hoping that, you know, we can look at the fact that we can get the thing about out-of-town developers coming in here. I guarantee you, there's nobody looking at, Mr. Mayor, nobody's looking at your house to buy it to put a little shack in the back, okay? I doubt that. This is probably a situation that if you had ten ADUs in that a year in Albany, I'd be stunned in that, okay? Because if you look at the geography of Albany, there's not a lot of open spaces in that to be able to do that in people's lots and stuff. I recently, about three weeks ago, was down at the Cessar's office, and there's a lady down there, and I just happened to ask, you know, hey, we got a lot of out-of-town guys coming in looking at stuff, because back in 2004 and '05, I went in there and I was behind in line with people going through a lot of the records and everything else, because they'd driven around Albany, and I watched systematically a lot of things get developed and that. I don't think there's as many out-of-town, out-of-state developers that you think that there are, and for them to come in and try to buy your folks' homes and stuff so they can put a shack in the back, it's not going to happen. And I mean, this is a rarity, and I think it's, like we've talked about generational living, that was a big topic in that back in November when I was at this conference, and that is about people moving in with families and kind of creating like a compound situation in that. You have, I think, and you could probably correct me, because you'd love to probably correct me, I think you get seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year from the federal government because we're considered a metropolitan area. I remember a couple of years ago asking you, Mrs. Mayor, if you could use some of that money to start task force, commissions, whatever you want to call them, be a little bit diversified on the people that come into them, like myself. I haven't had the honor of being on a commission for a long time because I'm not considered a resident of Albany, even though that, my address is Albany and stuff, so, and you've made sure of that. But I would like to see, why don't you use some of this federal money and that and investigate this? You know, everybody wants to spend all these grants and everything else, you know, hiring this person, hiring that person, or trying to figure out something. You've got the money there to try to see, you know, what works here. And lastly, I'm just saying that you should pass this ordinance. I think you're making too big of a deal out of it. I probably think you know that, too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Next is Wayne Schiller.
Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor Wayne Schiller, 34819 Knox Butte Road. Here to speak in favor of your enhanced provision of these ADUs. Number one is your housing shortage. What better way to enhance that and help out the population and people coming into Albany than this? Second is, in terms of the size, I think we heard earlier, in terms of disabilities, having those tiny homes, if it's seven-fifty or even under that, the smaller hallways in there make it difficult for that type of person to move around in that space. I lived in a tiny home myself, and so I'm well aware of what that looks like. In terms of looking at other cities, obviously, this is Albany, and we should look at Albany for what Albany is. It's a blue collar town, and we should focus on that and not compare it to places such as Portland. In terms of regulating the owner to occupy the same land, I think the problem associated with that is when the owner sells that residence, that space in the back is going to be pretty hard to regulate in terms of restricting someone to not occupy that space. I think that causes more problems if you do try to restrict that. And so that reason alone, I would say, an owner-occupied situation would not be a wise decision there. That's all I have. Any questions?
Okay. All right. Thank you, Wayne. Okay. That's it. That's signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Yes, ma'am.
I have signed up.
Oh, no, I think, was there another sheet?
Oh, I'm taking someone out of the lineup.
No. Mary, was there another sheet for sign-up?
Well, the other one is for the municipal court or municipal airport. It's mainly a signed-up.
Oh, do you think you signed up on, was there very many? Let me look at this list then. Okay, there was three people that did sign up. I think they, they didn't look at the municipal court one. So were you Steph Newton?
Teresa Maguire. Yeah, the one that had, said I couldn't come last night, you know, but I did.
Okay. So you're on this list, so yeah, go ahead and come up. And then from there would be Steph Newton and Bob Schiller.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you told me there's the other list.
Teresa Maguire, M.C., G-U-I-R-E. I live at 2844 Arlington Drive Northwest. First of all, I want to thank each and every one of you because I did live in Portland for thirty years, and I'm a Mid Valley girl, and I'm so glad to be back here, and this is very refreshing. And you're each to be commended for how patient you are, because I've spoken at Portland City Council. Anyway, my husband is a civil engineer. We had Maguire Homes, there was seven-one, seven-oh-three, OCCB, built a number of houses. We currently own four rental houses in Corvallis. And I just kind of, I do have a page prepared for you, but I'm not going to read it for read'em. And I do believe that this is about character. What character do we want to have for our town? And all those needs come into it. And, you know, I think there's some valid points with affordable housing from the aspect of senior living or providing family housing, grow-ins, sort of things. First of all, I want to address street parking. And I do agree that the curb cuts to make more parking can take away a spot out of the street. We get an LID in our own neighborhood where we have the hundred-by-hundred lot, and other people have the sixty-five-by-hundred and whatever. And so I always felt like that a larger driveway throat that took the parking away, and there was always parking since, since you paid for your own street, the LID, I always felt they were parking on my street or my curb. And I know that's not the case. However, there's, that can be addressed with either double or triple stacking. And I do think it's important in some areas of the town, you know, if there's no curb and gutter along the street, I think you're going to have water quality issues. You know, people are parking out off of the tarmac. I can see that there would be issues that way. I also think in smaller neighborhoods where you're probably, maybe you're fifty-by-one-hundred lots, where you do have less on-street parking, you are creating a certain amount of frustration and anger. I had to laugh, having recently left Portland, it's been a year-plus now, and the story about the woman that went out with her gun and accosted some man over in northeast Portland because he was parked in, along her curb. Let's see. The second thing I wanted to get to was that, you know, in the two-hundred pages that are attached to tonight's meeting, it talks about, make it clear that design standards do not apply to detached accessory dwelling units. So this makes me worried for exactly what will we end up with? What are those design houses for a single-family homes? And those are, those are kind of outlined in blue throughout, you know, throughout the attachments. So in other words, like tonight was an eight-page, you know, with the blues and the reds marked in there or crossed out. And so how I took that, and I may be wrong on this, is that the standards here in Albany are to create pedestrian-friendly, sociable, safe, and attractive neighborhoods through human-scale design, and that these standards emphasize the structural relationship between the home and the street. And I think that is one thing with ADUs. They're not, they're not tied to the street. They're just kind of placed, you know, in the back, and so there is that kind of irritation. And I'm not saying how that should be rectified, that's not my job. But it does get to a second portion of that. That has to deal with solar, solar sorts of issues. So in other words, if I am, and privacy screening. So if I'm in a house that's, you know, twenty, thirty years old, and I've planted my garden or I've put my flower beds in or whatever it might be, all of a sudden, someone's gotten the opportunity to put in a two-story-tall building. And if it's nine-hundred square feet, I always kind of thought, you know, there are some solar guidelines out there. And if all of a sudden you have taken away my sanctuary and my backyard, that is an issue. And I know you'll laugh, because that's probably why people are here. On Next Door, when I was on Next Door for the Southwest Portland, one woman was, I felt so sorry for her because she was being attacked because she was lamenting that the neighbor purposely built an ADU, and as the one man said, he felt like, you know, your sightline, your sightlines are into my backyard. So, you know, and I don't know how you do that, even on a ten-thousand-square-foot lot. You know, having been a builder, and if you're trying to keep all those solar and everything else in, and then also honor that, you know, I planted my garden here or whatever, or, you know, all of a sudden I don't have screen to block you out. Let's see if I've hit my highlights. Oh, the comparison to Portland. And I did sell a house in Southwest Portland, and I did see what went on there. And the last year that we were there, we rented in a neighborhood, just like I said, where it was down in the Johns Landing area, and parking was at a premium, because people wanted to be there to either easily avoid the parking fees of downtown. And maybe at some point you'll see that. You'll see a ring of people that are, have to suddenly create different ways of either taking cheap transportation down there to avoid the parking. We're not there yet, but we might be. So I thought that was very interesting. When you don't supply that off-street parking, you know, it may not be an issue now, but it will be at some point down the road. Also with Portland, their ADUs there are very expensive. I believe most of them are probably Airbnbs. And so I will leave you with that. My preference, I'm not, I've got to admit, I'm a NIMBY. Having built houses, I know what the cost of these things are, although I've been retired now for a number of years, so I don't know exact costs, but I will tell you that I can't see how you do all that, address the concerns. You want to have a neighborhood with character, and I do see that it's hard to have that taken away for those little old ladies, those little old whatevers, for the curmudgeonly old people like me that would be going, you're parking next to my curb. So with that, those are my thoughts. Don't know if you have any questions, but I do, like I said, it's very refreshing. I enjoyed it. I've enjoyed my life and all the stuff I've done with construction and whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Teresa. Okay. Next is Steph Newton. Steph, I think she stepped out. How about Bob Schiller? We'll see if she steps back in. Bob Schiller? Don't, I don't see him.
Don't see him.
Okay. We'll see if Steph comes back in. With that, was there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
So my name's John Clock. I live in 830 Northwest Riverboat Avenue in Hickory Hills. I just found out about this meeting tonight, so I just wanted to, one minute is all I'm going to talk about. Hickory Hills is a small subdivision in North Albany, just west of the Starbucks there. In the last ten years, it's had a park and ride built, Bonn Adventure Assisted Living built, about twenty homes, Hickory Hills Apartments, and there's other stuff going on there as well, down the street across from the Albany Sports Club. So North Albany Road has become congested, as has Highway 20. The bridge is constantly backed up. In terms of the ADU issue, I'm, I'm just, the question I'm asking is, what is the vision? Twenty years, forty years, sixty years down the road, the sustainability vision for walkability or open spaces? And I don't, I'm a little bit depressed. I'd like to see a little bit, something more about that. Anyway, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John. Anyone else?
My name is Christina Howgie. I live at 1595 Waverly, Southeast Department 201. I just wanted to mention that it seems that most of the points of view that we're hearing on both sides of this are from actual property owners. I'm a renter. I don't expect ever to be able to afford my own home. Affordable housing is important to me. I'm in favor of the ADU idea. My only concern is the parking. I am concerned about a lack of off-street parking in any neighborhood, just because it seems that relying on on-street parking leads to safety issues. You know, you have streets like, I see- You know, you have streets, like I see in Corvallis, because I work in Corvallis often, and if you're driving through a neighborhood that's full of cars that are not parked off the street, people can step out from between those cars and just really suddenly appear in front of you if you're driving. So the safety concern of the off-street parking is my only concern, but I'm all for the ADUs.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Christine. And anyone else? Yes. And then, sir, I'll get you next.
Never did this before. My name is Mona Farmer, and I don't live in town. I haven't yet. However, if I move in from where I'm at, Albany is the place that I probably will be moving to. I've been, I personally have identified with this town for more than twenty-five years. So as far as this ADU thing, I have to say, my original feelings was one direction. And after tonight, with some very clear information and data and level-headedness from several people and points of perspective, I realized my leaning has gone more so the other direction. But I do hear so much, and it's the way I feel, when I go to look to buy a house, I don't want to have a single-story home with a two-story looking down at me. I wonder whether or not the consideration would be that the ADU being built could not be more than a certain height above the homes surrounding it. In an older neighborhood, you can have two-story homes. It's not unusual, for instance, I know Mr. Olson lives downtown, to have larger pieces of property with lots of landscaping, depending upon the placement and the design of the structure. That might be workable in his neighborhood. In a ranch neighborhood, the last thing I want to see is a two-story thing looking down at my yard. So maybe that might be a consideration, to look at some restrictions on what can be built. One of the other things is, because I live out in the country, I discovered somebody across the highway from me wanted to add a structure. I had to get, the county had to send out to all the nearby neighbors whether or not we would agree to allow an extra mobile home on that piece of property. Oh, wow, keys across the way, don't see any problem with me. And where I used to live in town in another city, if a truck driver wanted to park his truck there, not with his trailer, or generally not with his trailer, he had to get permission through the city from the neighbors as to whether or not that would be allowed in his neighborhood. So in both of those situations, there was considerations to the neighbors by an actual process in place. And I don't blame the not-in-my-backyard, because I'm certainly on that part. At the same token, one of my coworkers had a house on Tudor. Her mother came to live with her. She was somewhat disabled. She built the mom cottage in the backyard. It was handicap accessible. Mom used wheelchair a lot, put a lot of consideration into that. A little bit later, she actually built a complete house, designed for her and her mother, but with separate living and only a connector on the backside. I helped her find the lot, by the way, and gave her some design ideas. In both of those cases, it was for an older person, and that was great. One of the beautiful things is, when she went to sell that house that she had designed for dual living but separability, and it was small, she had quite a special market there. There were people wanting that, because that wasn't available. Some of the smaller housing that is desired, that's beyond an apartment, isn't necessarily available. But I certainly think the neighbors should be able to have some input over the design and that the codes consider what it would be like to suddenly having this in your neighborhood, whether or not that fits in and how that would impact the people. That's what I have to say.
All right. Any questions? Thank you, Mona. Okay. Yes, sir.
Strange having a microphone in front of my face. My name is Michael Fox. I live at 520 19th Avenue Southwest here in Albany. That's F-O-X. Wasn't originally planning on speaking. I didn't even know it was an issue until I walked into the room tonight. But I thought maybe I'd offer a different personal story. I live on the big house on the block. The house next door originally began use as what would now be considered an ADU. We then later subdivided the unit, or subdivided the lot, that became an own separate property, and then subsequently built an additional ADU in the backyard of that particular property. And my experience has been, these are anchoring the neighborhood. They are not depressing property values. They're actually buoying them, because several of the other homes in the area are considered distressed properties and might very well have been torn down for redevelopment if this had not already been done in the area to help offer some reason for people to keep the properties even as rentals. I also have not seen anything that would suggest the kind of concerns mentioned here relating to parking. I have much greater problems with somebody that was allowed to open up a machine shop and now stacks fifteen cars in front of his home than any of the neighbors, and this neighborhood even includes multifamily apartment dwelling that all new uses on-street parking. Those considerations aside, I just want to speak to the issue of the housing crisis that we're experiencing in town. When I refinanced my house earlier this year, I found out just how much had gone up in value during this housing crisis. I literally would not be able to afford my own home today if I was in the position to be purchasing for the first time. And this is after being in a much more affluent place than I was when I bought it initially. That seems like a ridiculous circumstance that's going to continue to block people out of the market, such as the child who's wanting to stay in the area, the older family that is wanting to give something to their kids. And as far as owner occupied versus non-owner occupied, I don't think the percentage of the public that wants to move immediately away from their homes is so high that we need to be overly concerned at this level with whether or not someone would want to stay for as long as they could. I'd rather not impose additional restrictions, when instead we might offer an incentive for owners to remain in their homes while maintaining something of this sort. And that would be outside the scope of the actual ordinance being described. Thank you.
All right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Does anyone have a question?
Well, yeah, let me make sure everyone can speak first. Anybody else that would like to speak? Yes.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My, one of my concerns with this is that somehow or another...
Can you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ann Ketter, K-E-T-T-E-R. I live at 1210 Washington Street Southwest. My concerns are about affordable housing. We keep saying that, and I don't view this as a solution to affordable housing. And I feel like we are viewing affordable housing, the burden of it is being met by these ADUs. The state and the cities around Portland and Corvallis, where there's high demand, do not have a lot of plans in place to deal with affordable housing. And my concern is that if we don't tackle that, families that are socio-economically challenged are not going to be able to afford these small houses in the backyard, and they're still not going to find any place to live. This is not the Band-Aid to fix this bleeding artery. We need to address affordable housing with a bigger plan, with a better plan, with an approach to long-term solutions for those that are challenged. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else that would like to speak on this? Yes.
My name is Dave Penyer. I'm at 1116 11th Avenue Southwest. I wasn't planning on testifying either, like several other people here, but I wrote a card when I heard some of the testifying earlier. So I had some sort of rhetorical questions. My point of view is, why are so many people testifying for the change yet where few ADUs will ever be built? I don't see where that's coming from. It seems like if this change is made, then that opens up a whole new arena, and quite a few builders here in this room will be quite excited at that, yet swear they don't want to get into this area of building ADUs, but are quite willing to come here in the evening and testify that they should be larger and there should be no owner occupancy requirement, which is my second question. Why is there a need to drop the owner occupancy requirement? I have not heard anyone testify that there is a great need. They're just saying, oh, it won't be a threat, that maybe down the line there'll be that option, that an owner will move away and leave behind his, the ADU and the house, and then at that point, he couldn't sell to somebody who will not live in the house. That seems like also an extreme circumstance and could be something addressed later on down the line, rather than dropping it here when ADUs are such a young topic here in the city. If ADUs are so expensive to build, how will they rent to low income? I don't see the low-income side of anything being addressed by allowing a larger ADU and removing the owner occupancy requirement. And then why are we in a hurry to change this ordinance to make it a larger size and remove owner occupancy when we have so few ADUs happening here in town and we have so little data on what the impacts are in a city? We do not have to be rushing to catch up with cities that are under extreme development pressures and join the bandwagon of ADUs. There are, Plaquemus County requires owner occupancy. I think the statistics earlier, we heard that a third of the cities here do require owner occupancy. Why are we in a hurry to drop it? I don't see the desire to do that. I don't think it's been proven. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dave. Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Deborah Dangler. I live at 3225 Southeast 14th Avenue in the Lehigh acre area. It's a very small, ranch-style, single-dwelling community. We do have two ADUs that are double-story. It's thickened the rest of the neighborhood. We wondered where they got the permit.
Can you move the microphone a little bit closer to you? Yeah.
We're wondering where they received the permits to build these two-story houses in a single-level neighborhood. Our acreage is usually fifty by a hundred. We value our large lots. We are a very close-knit community. I don't understand why we need to place more concentration in what is considered a wonderful neighborhood. It's a desirable neighborhood, and I know that, because realtors are continually stopping at the house, asking if we're interested in selling. And other neighbors have said the same thing. I don't see the ADUs as the answer. And personally, I think because of the housing crisis, they're trending now, and they're on the uptick. I think we have yet to see the good or the bad of what happens with these ADUs. I apologize, this is very out of character for me, but this concerns me greatly, and I appreciate the opportunity to express that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Debbie. Anyone else? Okay. John, you had a question?
Yeah, I had a question. I shouldn't have mentioned it earlier, but I'm aware that a thousand friends of Oregon sent in letters for free. I just wonder how that gets read into the record, because I'm sure all these folks didn't know about it, and if there's other letters that people send in that are in opposition or, hey, how does that get read into the record so that all the public that came out tonight knows that?
Okay. So it's actually, the record is for the council for their consideration this evening. So there was five letters submitted. There's been emails that have been submitted that are all on the city server. So the record is in case something is appealed, but it's not, not everything is brought out publicly and read during our public hearing. But everything that has been submitted is a part of the record, so, which is all fine.
So are they all on the website someplace, or...
They will be, yeah. So they will be on the website.
No.
Anything that is a part of our record, then these will be scanned in for part of the laser...
The way items that are handled, that are submitted for the record is, they are archived, so everything is available with public records request. Items that are submitted by staff are put on the website. Items that are submitted not by staff are not put on the website, but they are archived. That's it.
Okay.
I have a question on timing. You know, I thought that this was a mandate that's already become law, mostly due to the Portland, you know, in particular, you know, Speaker of the House Kotek. So are you under, are you under the gun, or is there a drug debt sort of time?
So actually, that...
Or the challenges?
Right. It was last summer is when cities were supposed to be, you know, to have all of this within their code. So, yeah, we could be challenged currently on, you know, not having this, you know, having all of the language totally changed in our code. So the DC 0418 would be our existing regulations for ADUs, but it just changes the language from some of it, from accessory dwelling units, from attached dwelling units. It kind of cleans up the language to it, to have us be into compliance with the state on that.
So I guess that was my question. You currently are in compliance with that.
No.
You're not trying?
Not with just that language. Right.
They didn't provide that, did they?
Right. So we need to have, we need to have something, to keep us in compliance, we need to be changing some of the text that we had in our code. But we don't have to change the regulation part of raising the square footage, taking away the parking requirements, and taking away the owner occupied. That we do not have to change on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, any other comments anybody would like to bring forward? Okay. Thank you, folks. We had some very good input this evening. Does any staff member wish to respond to any testimony?
No, not because I...
Okay. And does anyone have procedural questions that they would like to raise at this time? Okay. With that, I declare the public hearing closed at 9:03 PM. And with that, so, counsel, you do have some options here in front of you and some motions, and that would be on your blue paper.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
And I would like to move that the City Council adopt the ordinance that would amend the Albany Development Code related to accessory dwelling units, planning file DC 04-18. And this motion is based on findings and conclusions in staff report and the findings in support of the amendments made during deliberations on this matter. I further move the City Council deny the amendments that exercise local discretion, and that is DC-05-18. This motion is based on the findings made during deliberations on this matter. And to make sure that we don't get stuck on the horns of a dilemma as we did last time, I would like you to ask our city attorney to read the ordinance on page eighty, which has to do, which is DC 0418. And it's further defined in Attachment A. Now, this streamlined pack of information, three hundred and some pages of it, contains four attachments A. And I believe the attachments A that we want to refer to are on page seventeen through thirty-five in this pack. So could we have a reading of the ordinance?
No.
Yeah. Which page, which page did you say?
It's page eighty.
On eighty?
In the page.
Okay. So, well, Dick, so actually, you've made a motion to be able to have it read. And Bill, did you say that was a second, to have it read? Okay.
The first reading is automatic. The first reading doesn't need a motion.
The first readings are automatic.
The first reading of the ordinance is automatic.
Well, what happened last month? Well, what happened last month, they didn't have any ordinance. I'd like to read the ordinance to make sure that we're on the right side of things.
Okay. Go ahead and just, and read that ordinance.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance be read a second time, title only.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We need to get some decisions made on this stuff. That's my-
All right. So the motion's been made, and there's a second, and that's to read the ordinance for a second time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. So with that-
Can I do a roll call vote on that, please?
Yes, you may.
Bolson.
Yes.
Sykes.
No.
Bessie Johnson.
No.
Kellum.
No.
Alex Johnson.
No.
Coburn.
Yes.
That's four noes.
Okay. So with that, there's no second reading, so then that can come back at the next council meeting. Or what would you like to do, council?
I guess that's what we do, wait till next month.
Wait till the next meeting? Okay. All right.
Actually, there are probably four votes to do the other, to do the other motion. If that is, to do the second motion, the one that has 900 square feet. Now, whether or not we can do that now because this has happened, I don't know.
No, you can make a motion to have that ordinance read as well.
Okay. I would, I would move that we, that we read the second motion.
Motion or ordinance?
Ordinance. I'll second that.
Okay. Sean, do you want to read that?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings and declaring an emergency. I'll point out that both of these ordinances say the exact same thing, it's just that the exhibits on, and some of the text is different. So it may sound to the audience like I've read the same thing twice, but-
And am I right that both refer to Exhibit A and don't say what pages or where they are? Then maybe Mr. Kellum can tell us where the pages are referred to.
So that'd be a question of the planning staff of exactly, but the Exhibit As, there's two different ordinance, so there's two Exhibit As for those, so yeah.
And the four on there don't, are not labeled as such. It's very confusing, I'll admit.
For the second ordinance, the attachment A starts on page 100.
All right. So you're read that as our-
So it's, so it's read first time, yeah.
It's read. First reading's been read.
Now, there can be, there can be discussion at this point about that ordinance, or someone could make a motion to read it a second time if there's no discussion, so.
It wouldn't pass. I mean, we're just going to come back in two weeks and go back over it again.
The motion on the floor is, the motion on the floor is, Kellum moved to read it in title only again, and Johnson seconded it, so it already received a second, but needs a vote to read a second time.
Right.
So do we have an opportunity to discuss, Your Honor?
So why don't we go ahead and-
Is there an opportunity for discussion before we move?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right. So I'm going to vote no. And the reason why is the no vote on the second reading on the first ordinance postpones that vote. And I don't think it's fair to postpone a vote on the first ordinance and then take a vote on the second.
I agree with you.
You know, we're going to take them, take them both. I think we don't know the outcome, but-
Rich, let's, Bill has the floor, please. Yeah, Bill.
I mean, without, without asking for it to be read, the second time in title only,
it just comes up in two weeks.
Right. No, that's a good point.
And we don't, you know, we don't have to go through the, all the folder, all of saying yes, and four people vote yes, and somebody votes no, so it goes in two weeks anyway.
But you still have to vote.
Okay.
We could have saved that time.
So with that, both ordinances, the one that's our existing regulations, the other one that would be lessening the, lessening the regulations have all had their first reading, so they will need to come back to the council meeting in two weeks.
Just to clarify, yeah, we have, we have to officially vote on that second ordinance.
Oh, that's right.
Second reading.
The second ordinance you read in title only, and you pointed out that they're identical. It's only the exhibits that are different.
Right.
So the second option did receive its first reading.
Right. I don't believe, did we have someone make a motion to read it a second time in title only?
No, they didn't.
Okay, so that would be the next, we haven't had that yet. So if you wanted to do that, we could do that now.
Okay. Then I, I'll read the second time in title only.
I'll second that again.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. All right. So, so both those ordinances will come back at our next council meeting, and that is on January 28. Or no, that's a work session on 28.
Mayor, I'm sorry, can I get a roll call vote on that second one so I have the accurate record?
Okay, yes, you may.
On that motion that we just voted on? Bolson.
The motion on what? To read a second time in title only?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Let's go ahead and read it and get the thing out of here.
Sykes?
Yes.
Johnson, or excuse me, Bessie Johnson.
Yes.
Kellum?
Yes.
Alex Johnson?
Yes.
Coburn?
No.
Okay. All right. So the next meeting is February 13th, but this, yeah, but this will be coming back then, and that's going to be our four vote ordinances on that. And then the decision will be made that evening. So, okay. All right. Thank you, folks. Thank you for your patience, too.
Can we have a break?
Yeah, can we have a break, please?
You know, I, can we listen to the-
Get the kids out of the way.
Let's get the kids out of the way.
Yes, okay. So now it's business from the public, and, or, I'm going to skip the airport. John, I hope you're okay on that. So business from the public, we wanted the kids, I mean, for the soccer. They're still here. If you'd like to come up, you guys have been very patient for two hours, so, so, yeah.
Thanks for having us. My name's Logan Hoffman. I live at 4211 Somerset Drive Northeast. I'm Board Three. So we had a bunch of kids come in today just to show you how important that this issue was to our community and the youth in our community. A lot of them straggled out just because of bedtimes and things like that, but a few have stuck around. So again, thank you for having us. I'm also the director of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit youth soccer organization called TFA Willamette. In the last three years, we've grown from 90 members to 400. And we really pride ourselves on living by our core motto of more than a soccer club. We provide a ton of support for our kids in terms of mentorship, direction, and opportunity, regardless of socioeconomic background. So in 2018, we provided over $12,000 of scholarship assistance to low-income youth so that everyone could participate regardless of whether they could afford to play or not. We partner heavily with South Albany High School, making sure that all of our seniors graduate or complete their GED. And in 2018, not only did all of our seniors graduate, but 14 of them also received soccer scholarships to continue playing and continuing their studies as well in college. We also partner with Jackson Street Youth Services to provide a program called Top Soccer, which provides athletic opportunities to youth with physical and mental disabilities. And we also provide economic opportunities within our community and social engagement opportunities, such as our Portland Timbers U23 game that we hosted at South Albany last May, that drew over 2,500 people in our community from as far north as Portland and as far south as Eugene. So organizations like ours are what helps you all achieve your strategic goals of providing, having great neighborhoods, a safe city, and a healthy economy. We're not alone as far as youth organizations that are helping prepare the next generation of leaders within our community. This includes organizations like Pop Warner, JBO Baseball, Little League. There's a lot of us in this community that are investing our youth. One thing that we've really run into is we've seen dramatic growth within our organization is a complete lack of facilities within our community for youth, right? Whether for practices, for games, and specifically at the city level. Greater Albany Public Schools has really bared the burden of this, and they do everything possible to provide these opportunities and these facilities for our kids, but they're truly overloaded. As we started looking at options, I was really shocked to find out that there is not a single park owned by the city that can be rented for soccer practices or soccer games. Same goes for football. I think there might be a couple for baseball. The only, the only soccer facility in town is Timber Ridge, which can't even be rented out. We've actually gone to parks before and asked for permits, and we've been denied for various reasons. We've done the same thing at Lexington Park for practices. I know this obviously comes back to the park, Parks and Rec, but obviously you guys oversee them at some point in time. So I know that the City Council sees this as a problem because in your previous strategic plan and master plan for the park, for the parks, you actually had a 50-acre sports complex listed as a strategic objective in the 2013, 2017, I believe is the Parks Master Plan. But, so that is, and correct me if I've got that document wrong, but that was within that last planning period. So I know this has come to your attention before, and I'm hoping now that we're about to head into another master planning session with parks, as my understanding is, that this is something that the City Council will make a priority for our youth. This is our future, right? And these kids deserve the facilities and the opportunities to do really well. And there's a lot of organizations investing in them to make this community better. But we are limited right now because of the options that we have.
So it's great information, Lloyd, I really appreciate it. And, and I think since the, we're going to be updating that master plan for the Parks and Recreation, so this is perfect timing. Because when we do a master plan, we really want to get the community engaged and really get the community's input on what all should be in that master plan. So this is great timing, but, and also, I think, bringing it to the council's attention that there is a big, it's a growing sport, and there's a big need for more, you know, soccer fields and stuff for the, for the youth to have.
And I do want to make it clear, by the way, it's not just a soccer issue. When I, when I'm here, I am fully, like, I, I want our youth to be able to do whatever they want, whether it's soccer or something else. But Pop Warner has the same issues. And I know this because we're constantly competing for, and I don't even like using the term competing, but we're always looking at the same facilities, right? And so I know JBO Baseball, I know Pop Warner have the same needs, right? And so it's not just a soccer issue, it's an issue for our kids to do whatever it is that they love. We don't, we aren't providing the access to facilities that they need right now.
That's great information. Any questions?
Well, I guess I just make the point that there is soccer being played. AYSO plays in Timberland.
Correct, but you cannot, you are, cannot rent that facility. So, for example, we have teams, and this, it's a really funny agreement. I actually encourage you to kind of read up on the history of AYSO's usage of Timber, or, excuse me, Timberland.
Well, they did the work to bring it up to snuff for them.
Yeah.
We didn't do that.
No, and I understand that. But what I'm saying is, that facility technically can't even be rented by AYSO. They're using it almost as a default because you can't rent the facility. If you can't rent the facility, I can't reliably plan on having games or practices without conflicts, right? So we, the leagues we play in draw teams from Portland all the way down to Medford, all the way up to Bend. I can't tell a team from, and we're scheduled at a statewide level, right? I can't tell a team from Bend, well, show up in Albany on Saturday this day, and hopefully we have a field to play on. Right? It doesn't work. Or I can't tell my teams, you know what, meet me at this park, and hopefully we've got a place to practice and a goal to use, right? I can't do that. So you're, yeah, absolutely, there is soccer being played. And we, I mean, we have, we have 400 kids in our club, we have a tremendous number of kids. We're, but we're using every facility we possibly can through the school district because they're the ones that will guarantee us, you can have this gym here and this field here and this, right? We can't get that elsewhere. And that, that's an issue, right? As, as our kids look to compete at high levels and, and do something that's more than just a recreational-based activity, which there's nothing wrong with. I love what AYSO does in providing a recreational opportunity for our kids, right? So I'm not against that at all. But when you are looking for something more organized than that, something a little bit larger, you can't rely on a facility that you might have, you might not.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Uh huh.
Thank you. I've been kicked off football fields as a referee by teams because they had it scheduled. And so it is an issue for all the adults that officiate as well, because we can't schedule a weekend because we don't know if a soccer team's going to show up or a football team will kick a soccer team off. And so I'm really glad you brought this to the City Council.
Thank you. And like I said, I, I want to represent all of our youth sports because there's tremendous coaches, tremendous referees, officials, doing things in all these sports that are supporting our youth. So thank you for volunteering your time to do that.
That's wonderful. Yeah. Very encouraging. So hopefully we can be able to get something worked out. I mean, I know it's, can be maybe a slow process, it's something we, you know, probably can't, you know, you know, solve overnight, and it takes time, and it's going to take money, too, to be able to build more soccer fields. But, but also, I would, you know, you know, encouraging, I'm glad you're working with the school district and our Parks and Recreation and be able to see how, you know, we'll try to meet the needs, you know, all we can, but-
Thank you. And on the money topic, there are so many awesome abilities for public-private partnerships that really need to be explored. Like our organization, for example, we can access almost a million dollars in grants through the U.S. Soccer Foundation, right? There's a lot of, specifically for soccer fields, whether it's turf, it can go lights, it can go to grass and irrigation. There are opportunities for that if we're willing and open to good partnerships, collaborative partnerships, that make our community better.
That's great. Yeah. Very encouraging.
Look into it.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I think, was that, was that it then on the soccer, folks? Okay. With that, then, let's go ahead and take a recess. So just five minutes.
I will close the public hearing and, and counsel, what would you like to do with this item? There's a resolution on page two oh three, two oh one.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And John, are you needing to wait for the other item? The Albany Municipal Airport One?
Yep.
You are on that one. Let's just go ahead and since I skipped over you before, we'll take up that item so you can go home for the evening. Would you like to comment on that item?
Again, the staff memo pretty much spells it out. We, because we're a category four airport, we fund the airport projects through federal dollars. We're required, we have grant assurances, one of which is prohibits the grant even exclusive, exclusive rights, which is one of the biggest ones. These minimum standards really are for the commercial aeronautical activities out there. So if you have somebody that comes on and they want to sell fuel or come on and work on planes, it just levels the plane field really with the other folks out there. It's not, not a requirement to have them, but the FAA highly recommends that you do have them.
So that was maybe a hypothetical about somebody coming on board wanting to sell fuel. Doesn't the current FBO sell the fuel?
Correct.
Okay. So it's purely hypothetical that somebody else wanted?
Yes, it, you could have somebody come on and want to sell regular motor gas, motor fuel. Some of those planes can burn that. So one of the big things in this is, you know, requiring that they have insurance, that they have the correct specs and all that stuff. It's really for the safety of everybody concerned at the airport.
Okay. Any more questions?
I have a question about the insurance. Is it reviewed annually by, how does it review?
Really, the insurance rate has been about the same on all these for a few years now. I think the, the land lease hangars, which we own the property, they lease the, the square footage of their hangars. That's been, I believe, half a million dollar insurance policy for quite a few years.
So, so each owner, each lease, each person that leases the hangars responsible for the half a mil?
Correct.
Okay. That's all.
And that, is that per hanger or is that?
Per, yeah. Per hanger, yep.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, there's a resolution on page two oh three.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. And any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Got you done, John. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go back up to business from the public. And I think Chuck, didn't you, you had an item? Thank you. Sorry you had to wait so long this evening.
Chad Howser, I'm here representing the Montith Historical Society. Your oldest house in the city of Albany is located directly across from the Federal Post Office. I just had a board member join the Montith Historical Board and she works with one half of the hotels in Albany. And I asked her, what can we do to support the hotels and put heads in beds? She said, we're getting calls right now, what can kids do in Albany during the school break in February besides ride on the carousel? We took that as a challenge. The Montith Historical Society will use some of the transient lodging tax funds that this city council gave us to conduct a birthday celebration for Oregon's 160th anniversary. I gave each you a copy of the invitation. What we're going to do is have a short presentation at the Albany Regional Museum on how Oregon became a state. Their mayor will cut us cake. We'll have the official state flag from 1859. We'll use the city trolley to take people around in the Montith and Hackelman District and downtown. The Hackelman area would like to show off some of the recent regeneration, modernization of new apartments and things and how that end of town is really coming back. We'll also have a chance to go by the fire department. They are going to celebrate 150th anniversary and that celebration will start on the 16th of February and it'll go all year long. Kids will have an opportunity to meet a fireman, medic, sit on a fire truck and of course turn the museum and get some safety factors and fire safety. The Albany Regional Museum is working on building a replica of the hand pump that the Albany Fire Department would have used to draw water out of the cisterns. The Cumberland Activity Center will try themselves out to introduce themselves to the public as an activity center. We'll have a coloring contest where kids can win free carousel rides. The Montith House and the carousel, of course, will be open. One of the other things about doing it in February is Channel Nine told us, there's almost no activity going on in February. If we try to compete in June and July, there's 200 events all over Oregon every weekend. So we're hoping we can seize the initiative there. And anyway, you're all invited and we would have done it here, but I didn't want to keep this facility open all afternoon. And we want to stay with the history theme and the kids will have a great fun trying to use that pumper. Any questions?
No, thank you so much for doing this and giving these activities for the youth. This is wonderful. So I'll be there, but thank you Chuck, thank you so much. And for all you do for the Montith Historic Society. Thank you. Okay, David, did you still want to bring an item forward?
Hi, I'm David Abar, 625 Fourth Avenue Southeast in beautiful Hackelman District. So what I wanted to talk about tonight was, I wasn't able to come to the January ninth council meeting, but I did watch it several times on YouTube. So the discussion about the advisory commissions or the citizen boards concerned me because some of the characterizations made during that discussion, I don't think was, was fairly portrayed. So, you know, as a member, I've probably, I think I'm in my second term as the Landmarks Commission. And, you know, I love doing it because I love where I live and Albany has the second largest inventory in the state of Oregon. It has the most varied architecture styles in the entire state, which is very unusual. So you can see where plots of land were built, not in like modern track areas where you see a new neighborhood with all the same exact style houses. These were built individual houses. That's why you see such a diverse style of architecture throughout Albany. So what I wanted to bring up is that on the Landmarks Commission, there's, there's a mission statement. So, you know, does anybody want me to read the mission statement? Does everybody know what the mission statement is of the Landmarks Commission?
Go ahead.
The Landmarks Advisory Commission was established by the city council in 1979. According to the Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 2.76, the LAC was created to effect and accomplish the protection, enhancement, perpetuation of improvements in districts which represent and reflect of the city's cultural, social, economic, political, and architectural history. The purpose of this commission is to safeguard the city's historic and cultural heritage, foster civic pride and beauty and noble accomplishments of the past, protect and enhance the city's attractions, strengthen the economy of the city and property values, and promote the use of historic districts and landmarks for the education pleasure and the welfare of the people of the city. The LAC maintains historic properties, records, recommends historic designations, coordinates preservation programs, and recommends rules and regulations necessary to carry out its purpose. It reviews applications for new construction and exterior alterations, additions, and demolitions for the buildings in Albany's four national register of historic districts, over 800 buildings as well as the roughly 80 buildings, additional buildings outside the districts on the local historic inventory. So, you know, when I first joined the Landmarks, staff was able to give me this binder, thoroughly thick binder, there's a lot of information in it. It's the standards, the Department of Interior Standards, the federal government, which gives suggestions on how to operate a national historic district. So there's, there's standards in place for the different things that occur to a national historic district. So this is very important to me. So this is a lot of information. The characterizations that was made in the discussion on the ninth made it sound like our opinions are haphazard and it's not based on any process or facts, which I have a big problem with. So the national, the, and the standards for the four historic, so this is from the standards that, that are on the website for the national park system, which is part of the Department of Interior. The standards offered the four distinct approaches to treatment of historic properties, preservation, rehabilitation, restorations, and reconstructions with the company guidelines for each. One set of standards will apply to property undergoing treatment depending on the property's significance, existing physical conditions, and the extent of documentation available to interpretive goals and applicable. So there's, the four standards are, I'm going to kind of jump ahead here. The standards and guidelines can be applied to historic properties of all types, material construction sizes and use. They include both exterior and the interior to an extent of the property's landscape features, site environment, as well as related constructions. So the reason I bring this up is so that if we, if we're going to change the way they're appointed, that people can use sense in how they're appointing people that are going to best fit these citizen advisor, advisory commissions. So just from the transcripts that I have, that I transcribed, there were some things that say, you know, that lead me to believe that. So, you know, I'm going to quote here, but Rich Kellum said, we have a very unbalanced system. People are passionate about the know you pick one, that they want to save houses or whatever that particular subject is. So they are all in favor of doing that one thing. So you have one out of seven person making an appointment. So you only get the first person that loves to do this. So that single person has their own idea of what is good and wonderful and marvelous. So that statement right there, so we're not applying any structure or, you know, there's no facts involved. Anyway, so you only get this one process, you don't get through the process, thought process of seven perfect people. You only get one. So if you have a situation where you have seven to nothing kind of votes on things where you have, where we have given like landmarks, where we have given them authorization to make decisions that have rule of law until somebody wants to pay some money and come appealing to us. And then he goes on to say, it would be nice to have somebody to have someone who had trouble with landmarks. And I have a young lady in the back of my head, it would be nice if that thought process was brought forward. So that's kind of what I'm talking about here is that it's characterized as though that there's no, that this isn't taken into account.
Right.
So if you are going to have like counselors make decisions like that, that I would hope that we are familiar with this.
Okay. All right. Thank you, David.
Question. So I noticed you said suggestions from the federal government and the fact that...
It's a department, it's a standard.
Well, it's a standard. It's a suggested standard. It's not a law. Right?
No, it's not a law.
Okay. So it is whatever you determine it to be, which in the system, we have another commission going on right now, a task group to deal with the rest of our code where we do not have concise standards for things. The state of Oregon has said, we can't not have standards. Now, they have made some cutouts for, for landmarks, but what you say, what you look and what kind of material it is and that kind of stuff, there isn't any rule that says what that is. It is your thought process. It is not someone else's. And if you have that whole scenario of you have one group of people, you only have one person putting them in place, are you saying that you have specific standards for the muttons in a window? Or did you pick one?
Well, kind of what I was saying before is that, are you aware that there's a mission statement for Landmarks Commission?
Sure.
Do you know what it is?
And the mission statement gets, gets one side. It doesn't give the other side.
That would be like taking somebody who likes to spray paint the side of a building and, you know, having them do the arts commission really. I mean, if you're going to get somebody, if you're going to want to place somebody in, in the mindset of government by disruption, then that's probably what you want to do.
That's not what I wanted, wanted, wanting to do. Anyway, I had my question answered.
What you said was, and I'll quote you, that you should get somebody on landmarks that had a problem with landmarks.
That's right. So that the people out there...
To me, that's government by disruption.
Excuse me, let me finish, please. So the people out there who have had trouble with landmarks, who when landmark says, I don't know, something, there is a standard that you want, and there was three people that said no and four people that said yes, that they were on the losing end of that.
There's an established standard that cities all over the United States will take and apply. So if you wanted to do something different than what the rest of the United States does...
By your own, by your own votes, they're not always 7-0. Sometimes they, well, there was one here with three houses where it was what, 4-1. We had disagreement. So if there's someone who lost out, they should be able to have someone's thought process there.
Okay. So with that, Rich, where it seems like I've been accused of who I appoint with the same thought process. When David first got on landmarks, I didn't know David. I just read his application and he looked like a good fit.
You missed, you missed a point, Mayor.
I seem to be getting accused that it's, I'm only appointing people with the same thought process, but how would I know when I didn't know them?
That is not what I said. What I said is they have the thought process that they have and you have your own. And when you make a decision, it is filtered through what you believe and what you like. Therefore, there is, when you have seven people out here, some of which you like and some of which you don't as far as what their, what their background is, you pick the ones of that seven to fill four spots that agree with you. That's the way, that's the way everybody is. It's not just you, it's everybody. And so when you only have one person making all the choices, you have the varying groups that you have saying, yes, pick me, but there's just you that says, I'm going to pick the one who I like in each one of these groups. So you tend to get people of a like mind on the groups that only one person picks.
Right. But your accusation is not factual. So I prove that on all of our...
I would say that you would want somebody that understands and embraces the mission statement.
I'd also think that you'd have someone who was passionate about their or other people's property rights. There's a balance that's supposed to be kept.
Okay. So...
I read the mission statement.
I'm done.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else from business from the public? Yeah, Mike?
Okay. Before I start, I got two things. I've, I want to just bring up one thing. I just talked to the young gentleman that came up here on the soccer situation. You guys really want to jumpstart something. We just paid a couple of years ago, one of the most expensive pieces of property in that in Albany history, that you guys bought with Pepsi money and some other stuff. It's right out on North Albany Road and it's the property that Byron Hendricks ransomed you and that for, for 2.25 million dollars. That property and that could be very quickly turned into some fields because there's hardly nothing on it. You could get a lot of volunteer people. I told them that I would help mentor on that thing, but I'm just giving it ahead of time that I think it's going to come because we're not doing nothing with that property. I've talked to Ed about it and it's just sitting there, two and a quarter million dollars.
It was a natural area and the funds were dedicated that were, okay, that were, grant funds were for natural area.
Yeah, put the second.
Okay. What I'm here tonight for has to do with building type situation here. I would like to have council direct staff, and I've talked actually to a couple of you staff and one counselor on this. I'd like to have council direct staff to look into during this code update that you're doing, with not a lot of builder input, mind you, to change the encroachment widths that, onto a sliding scale method. I've talked to Ron Irish about the fact of back in 2001, we had the Great Neighborhoods Development. It's one of those commissions that actually I got to be on and I still live at the same place I live at, but now I can't be on any of these commissions because I've been told and that, that I'm not a resident of Albany and that, by our mayor and that. So my situation is, is that I want to see about changing, because in 2001, it was stated that we addressed the encroachment of 24 max as far as on driveways. We didn't. I still have all my notes on it and this was done by staff afterwards and that it was never done with the 17 members that we had. And I think we had a $7,500 grant that we used, you know, to facilitate this for about eight weeks. Anyway, right now you're in this code development thing. I was told that I would have to, if I wanted to tackle it myself, I'd have to pay $3,200, you know, to try to change a code. Why should I do that? Why not put it into what we're doing right now? Because it has to be updated. And the reason it has to be updated, because it's market driven. There are people with RVs that want to park their RVs and that onto their property and stuff because they're in storage facilities, getting broke into and everything else. And, but I had a nice talk with Ron Irish, he brought me up to date with, and we kind of, he liked my idea, sliding scale theory. A lot of these developers that are coming into town are building these little 50-foot wide lots. We know that we don't want over half of that being a driveway. So you end up at about a 24-foot wide driveway because you want to still have two parking spaces out in front and I get that. But we should look at a sliding scale because right now out in Millersburg, I've got about 14 houses out there that they all got 32-foot wide driveways. They said that nobody's had any driveways in Albany wider than 24 feet since 2001. Well, we went around, we actually counted probably about 52 in that at this point. And I actually got where they're at if somebody really needed to know that information and stuff. So I'd like to do a sliding scale type thing. If you have a 60-foot lot, maybe you could go to 26 feet. If you had a 70 or 80 foot, you could go up a little bit more, but max it out, say at 30 or 32 feet. And you could do this, I've talked to planning, you could do this, but you guys have to direct staff in with what this code development that you're trying to do right now. So is there any questions on that? Because then I'm going to go on to my next question.
So Mike, would you do this automatically when you're building a new home? Or you just want the option in case that homeowner wants to say, I'm going to have a motorhome? Can you make this wider?
It's market driven. Technically, I wouldn't want to put any more money into the property and that unless, you know, somebody wants that and stuff, you know, so...
Just as an option.
And, you know, like I say, up in North Albany, there's like about 30 of these like that triple Y garages and stuff, yet they're only, and these were built like in 2008 through like 2014 and stuff, and, but they're up there. So they're conducive to some of the neighborhoods and so on.
Question. Did you tell David Martino about this?
Yes. In fact, actually David was the one that tried to tell me I had to pay $3,200 in order to try to get something going through. And I said, I don't think you have to and that, I actually have talked through a number of you and, and I don't think I'd have, we'd have to do that. We could actually put it in with comments and that with your commission that you have that, like I say...
I think what we need, Mike, though, is to have staff come back with a report and to let us know what their thoughts are on it.
Yeah. Well, like I say, we've taken the approach of a sliding scale, not just that, hey, we're going to have a 32-foot wide. I would like, out in Millersburg, you have a 10,000 square foot lot size. Most of the lots are like 100 foot by 100 foot. Okay, if you go 32 foot, you're only really going one third of the frontage of the property and stuff. But I'm telling you, that's what everybody wants. If they can afford it, they want to have that. We haven't been developing too many big lots in Albany, but, you know, we want to be able to have that option and that for the customer because it is market driven.
It takes away parking from that ADU, so... But yeah, we'll bring it, have staff bring it back to us, so...
Okay. Second thing, I would like to look into a mechanism and that on changing our water and sewer charges and that for our builders and that in this town. Right now, basically, I take a permit out and I've actually talked to some of the city staff and they said, well, we don't have a mechanism to do this, but I can buy a permit tomorrow and by tomorrow afternoon or the next day Friday, I would have a meter set, you know, put in because that's what you do. You do a drop in meter with every, you know, permit that you pull up. You have city water available there. What ends up happening, they put a, they put a meter on this, I mean, excuse me, a lock on it. In Millersburg, they don't. In Millersburg, villa actually takes about four months on the average, five months to build a house. At the end of that five months, you're actually reading your water meter and the average house, and I've actually, I've got a graphic on this, between 350 and 450 gallons of water it takes to build a house. That's mixing mud, washing windows, washing off the driveway, it only takes that. But if I get charged every month about $90, and this is the, this is the fun part about this. I'm not, the minimum water usage is 750 gallons and I don't even use that in the whole building and stuff. And the other thing is, is that I'm being charged a minimum on the sewer, which nobody, I mean, nobody uses the sewer and that on a house building that until about two weeks before they finalize the house. When they finalize the house, about two weeks they're putting toilets, they're putting sinks and so on. I would like to see you direct city staff and that in order to, to basically look at that. And there is a mechanism and I would say after four months, you know, unless they finalize and you get some of these guys coming in, they put up a house in 60 days, which that has happened and you get what you pay for on that one. But I would, I would like to see a mechanism put in there that, you know, there's no lock on it. You start, you know, they could check it every month if they want to, but if you went, say, over or something like that, it'd be just like a regular bill and that, you know, you might end up at the end of it with a $120 bill instead of that minimum 90 because you're not using the sewer. I pay $90 a month in that to have a porta potty because it's state code and that, that I have a bathroom per house. And they might be a block apart from each other. I still have to pay $90 a month to have a porta potty out there. So I'm paying twice for something and I'm not using the city part of it though. So I'd like to see a mechanism on, and I would like to help on that if that's granted.
Yeah, we can have staff bring, bring us back a report on that. So get the specifics for it.
Okay. Any questions on that one?
All right. All right. Thank you, Mike. Anyone else from business from the public?
Stick around.
Now Cameron?
Hello, my name is Cameron Somer. I live at 2307th Avenue in the wonderful Montith National Historic District. The City of Albany Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Two states in Goal Five, Open Spaces, Scenic and Historic Areas and Natural Resources, quote, "No less intangible, but far less renewable than most natural resources, Albany's historic resources are an important asset to the citizens of Albany and Oregon. The historic cityscape, which Albany citizens encounter every day, is valued because it gives people a sense of permanence and continuity, a sense of place. A community's image of itself is important in sustaining both its economic health and the well-being of its citizens. A poor image will not attract new industries or commercial businesses nor stimulate civic pride. By emphasizing its historic landscape, Albany can enhance this image and offer an attractive tourist setting. Albany's historic landscape represents a vital, irreplaceable heritage of traditions. It is a unique collection of structures representing every stage of Albany's growth and mirroring Oregon's distinctive cultural history." It goes on to say, "Citizen groups have been energetically involved in the process of establishing historic districts and they have developed a number of support projects including historic home tours, fundraising for restoration of the Montith House, the original home of Albany's founders, the establishment of Preservation Resource Center. In addition, a Landmarks Advisory Commission was created..." In addition, a Landmarks Advisory Commission was created whose functions include the development of educational and funding programs to protect the city's historic resources." Switching over to Article 7 of Albany Development Code, the overview in Section 7.000 says, "The regulations of historic overlay districts supplement the regulations of the underlying zoning district. The historic overlay district provides the means for the city to formally recognize and protect its historic and architectural resources. Recognition of historic landmarks helps preserve a part of the heritage of the city. I take offense to city council members attacking volunteer commissioners for dedicating their time to upholding the preservation goals as stated in Goal Five of the city's comprehensive plan. They do this by following the rules of Albany Development Code, Section 7.0. Any decision they make is not based on personal bias. They make decisions based on the development code with the objectives of Comprehensive Plan Goal Five as guidance." To suggest that people need to be appointed to these posts that want to tear everything down is obstructionist ideology that goes against the city's comprehensive plan and development code. And it mocks those that have spent both their professional and personal energies on the Landmarks Commission. This attack on landmarks is even more surprising when one looks at the voting record of landmarks in 2018. Every single quasi-judicial review was unanimously approved, except one. And a single decision not approved was a split vote. The mayor does not vote except to break a tie. One of those things the mayor does is to appoint people to advisory commissions, but only after the approval of the council. Trying to take away these appointments because the appointments turn around and uphold the Comprehensive Plan and Development Code is vindictive and it has no place in our city government. During the last council session, the question was asked, "Why don't we appoint people to landmarks that want to tear stuff down?" It's an interesting and somewhat perplexing question to ask and one that I'll answer was two photos. Kind of hard to see right here, but this is First Street and there's me, there's my brother peeking into a storefront. This particular photo was taken in Albany in 1980. I did have a store downtown Albany and often we'd spend time at the store and wander around town, sometimes downtown, sometimes we'd go to the library. One of the things I really liked doing was walking around the Montes District. Why? Because it was a beautiful place, wonderful architecture. It had heritage to it that created a bridge that went back from the current times to when the great, great grandfather headed the nation land claims south of town. I grew up in North Albany, ranch house, sort of an acre, not that bad of a place to grow up, but it's not where I really wanted to live. Where I wanted to live wasn't a mansion on the coast in California, wasn't a penthouse somewhere in Portland, New York City. I wanted to live in downtown Albany, in one of those historic palaces when I grew up. I went to college, got a job, lived in the Portland suburbs, spent eight years in Tigard. Tigard is a similar size to Albany as mentioned before, has streets like Albany does, has trees like Albany does, it's got businesses and houses. Houses aren't the same there. It doesn't have a soul like Albany does. When I lived there, didn't really care about Tigard, never went to a city council meeting, didn't really follow up on, on. I worked, I ate, slept, and every chance I got, I went out of town and I went to someplace more interesting. Albany has something special here and when you live other places, you really realize it even more so. Eventually, I took a job in Corvallis, went house hunting. You know, many childhood dreams, they don't come true. Wanted to be a professional firefighter, was a volunteer but never a professional. Wanted to be a rock star. If you look in the top 40 list, I'm not on there. Don't have a car, don't know how to play it. But in 2009, 31 years after the first photo I just showed you, one did come true. I bought and moved to, into a house in downtown Albany. This is the photo my friend took on June 25th, 2009. It was the day that the sale closed and I bought the house. Childhood dream fulfilled. It actually brings me back to my first photo. You see, the first photo was actually, I was photobombing it. I didn't even know it was being taken at the time. But the first photo is from page 91 of a historic survey for the Downtown National Historic District. Just happened to be walking by and got captured in it. Send the ship a document if you want to check it out. I was just shop, just a kid, window shopping, enter 24th good time. But in the meantime, someone was out there taking a photo. And why were they doing that? It wasn't to get my best side, it was because they were doing a historic survey to protect Albany's legacy. It wasn't just the downtown district, it was the Montes District, the Hackaman District, the preservation standards in general. There was a Landmarks Commission behind it. This protection meant that when I came back to Albany-Montes neighborhood, what I grew up loving was still there. I could come back to it. We're not the last generation. There's grandchildren, great-grandchildren, they deserve the chance to connect to Albany's heritage just like I did. It's called stewardship. That's why we don't appoint people that want to tear stuff down to landmarks because of stewardship.
Thank you, Cameron. That was a great story too, so, yeah. And your family's business, was it Settlemyre Interiors, wasn't it?
The Interiors is correct.
Yep. Remember that? So, right where Loafers is now. Yep, yep. Thank you. Anyone else from business from the public? Okay. All right, folks, thank you. That takes care of the first page. We are on our second page, so we should be able to go through this one pretty quickly. The first is the adoption of the consent calendar. Council, if there isn't anything that needs to be pulled off this evening for discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Next is award of contracts. This is authorizing staff to enter into contacts with Claire Company and Northwest Code Professionals. This starts on page 247. I was going to say, which staff is going to be tackling this one, so. Let's see. Jonathan? Yes?
Good evening. My name is Mayor, Council. For the record, Jonathan Balkema, building official and manager for the City of Albany for Community Development. This evening, I'm here to ask council to sign the attached resolution, another attachment A, is on page 247 of the agenda, to enter into two contracts, one for the Claire Company Inc. and one for Northwest Code Professionals for on-call building inspection and plant review services. The building division utilizes on-call inspectors to deal with staffing issues. Currently, we are using up our commercial plan, our commercial plumbing inspections as the industry's had challenges locating A-level plumbing inspectors. So as I came on board, we decided to look at our previous contracts, renew them and add an additional one to add capacity in case our current contract is unable to fulfill services that we need. So the memo attached basically just asks you to follow through with the RFP that we put out in December and we had four proposals that came in. The committee looked through those proposals and settled them on the two successors, which were the Northwest Code grows and the Claire Company.
Okay. Any questions?
What page was that again? I had a question.
This is on page, starts on page 246. The resolution's 247.
The only question I had about this is, you have them both on the same resolution? Are they two separate companies or are they the same company?
They are two different companies. The resolution's just authorizing the Community Development slash Public Works Director to enter into contracts.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
Let me see.
How many inspections, I mean, apparently the city staff can't handle them all or aren't qualified for them. I mean, how many are we looking at and what's the cost?
So it's not necessarily, we're not qualified for them. So each one of our disciplines, we end up having to have certifications from the state of Oregon. Currently, there is a shortage, a known shortage of A-level electrical and A-level plumbing inspectors. Thankfully, we do have an A-level electrical inspector. Somewhere following the Great Recession, we ended up having no A-level plumbing inspector, so we have been relying on third-party contracts for that service. Currently, we utilize someone three days a week for approximately two to three hours a day, so somewhere around six hours, six to eight hours a week on average for our commercial inspections. And quite often, they end up doing other inspections because we traditionally have not had a large commercial plumbing need. The current workloads is switching a little bit more and each recruitment, we do try to put out there that we'd like an A-level plumbing inspector. Unfortunately, everybody that qualifies for that certification, we're currently committing more money in the field actually installing the pipe versus inspecting the pipe.
There has been some consternation around cities and counties about the state mandating that inspectors have to be certain kinds of folks from certain places. Are the people we're contracting with viewed as qualified by the state? Or is there, are we in an interim period?
So all the entities that we are contracting with or asking to contract with, will our by-state rule ending up having to have a certification that allows them to work for that third party? The issue that I'm assuming you're referring to actually had more to do with small jurisdictions that wanted to rely on third parties for their entire building department. So basically outsourcing my position, outsourcing all of our staff, the Building Codes Division, the division that actually oversees our assumption of a state program, basically was previously putting into rule that those people had to be employees of the jurisdiction for plumbing or for electrical and for the building official. They've since rescinded most of that rule. They did say that my position has.
Thank you.
Just one more short thing. So are the city staff, are they training for it, trying to get the certifications? Or are we just kind of like having a permanent part-time person?
Unfortunately, to qualify for this certification for plumbing portion of it, unfortunately, our staff doesn't qualify for that, so it's not something we can train for. So most of us have, I have a limited commercial plumbing inspection. Most of our staff have that. That's the highest that we can go. There's a level above that ended up being requiring journeyman level, actual field installation or a design degree in plumbing, which we are able to achieve. So currently, we are relying on those third parties while each recruitment, we try to acquire somebody that has that certification.
Interesting. All right, thanks.
Okay. Council, you have a resolution on page 247.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. All right. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Okay. Then next is authorizing staff to enter into contract for two medic units. So Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Fire Department's in a situation where we need to replace two of our aging medic units and tonight, before we do, ask the council to approve exemption from the competitive bidding requirements and authorize the department to enter into a contract to purchase these two units through an existing interstate cooperative contract between Houston Gallston Area Council, HGAC, and Braun Industries, Inc. through the local state representative, which is Hughes Fire Equipment, to go ahead and purchase those medic units. We were able here a few months ago to do a side-by-side comparison of the, of the major manufacturers of medic units and through that process, we identified the one that best met our needs and also each unit was evaluated based on price, quality, fit and finish and maintenance facilities and their customer service that they provided. And Braun Industries, Inc. out of Ohio was the clear winner of that side-by-side comparison. The local vendor for that medic unit is Hughes Fire Equipment out of Springfield, Oregon, and we're able to purchase the unit that we want through them, through that HGAC by contract. As my memo stated, once we finished the process that we went through, Neighborhood Department in Lebanon looked at our results of that, they looked at the specs of what we had created from that and they decided they wanted to jump on board with that as well. So by doing that, us purchasing two, Lebanon Fire District purchasing one, that actually provides us a savings of $9,000 per unit. So for the two units, we actually get an $18,000 savings on that. So we'd like the ability to go ahead and advertise that and then make that purchase from there. So with that, I would answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Where's, where's the local repair facility?
Local repair facility is in Springfield. Is that correct? Yeah. It's at Hughes Fire in Springfield, Oregon. Which that was honestly one of the things that put this medic unit, this manufacturer, ahead of the other ones. The other ones didn't have a local facility.
No, this is just the box or this is the box and?
This is the box and the whole unit. The units that we're replacing have already been remounted once and they're not able to be remounted again. So we're at the point that we need to hopefully replace those units completely. So we're buying a whole new medic unit, box and chassis.
So I don't know if reaching out to Lebanon was part of the original plan, but kudos to you for thinking outside the box, saving money.
Yeah. Worked out very well. Thank you.
Did you call Corvallis?
Do you have any conversations with Corvallis?
Yes. We tried. Or Salem or anybody else.
All right. You have a resolution on page 252.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Chief. And next, we have an intergovernmental agreement with City of Lebanon. So Kristin? And this is on page 255, Council. Resolution is.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My council memo starts on page 253. So the City of Lebanon is in search of temporary disposal options for their biosolids at their wastewater treatment plant due to capacity issues that occurred during the winter time. Last year, Albany entered into an IGA to accept a certain amount of their biosolids, which represents about 3% of our solids. Lebanon, they did not need emergency hauling last year and no biosolids were actually ever received at the Albany WRF. We had a previous IGA with Lebanon that expired in December 2018 and Lebanon has requested another agreement because things haven't, haven't changed there. Things haven't also changed for us at the WRF and we're still able to accept this amount of, limited amount of biosolids from Lebanon. So we've proposed a similar IGA with the same limits on quantity and quality of the biosolids with the weekly and annual maximums and other terms. We proposed another one-year agreement with the option for an additional year at the discretion of Albany staff. We've reviewed the costs and we've increased them from $600 per dry ton to 630, which is a 5% increase in, in the first year into 650, which is another 3.2% increase for the option year. The costs include hauling fees, dumpster liners, polymer, power and a loaded labor rate that's associated with the solids handling. The cost also includes wear and tear in the equipment. The IGA gives Albany, gives Albany, continues to give us the option to cancel or not accept their solids due to odor issues, equipment breakdown or due to odor issues, equipment breakdown, or if we're overrun with solids at the treatment plant. Budget impacts, if it's like last year, there won't be any budget impacts if they don't need the emergency hauling. But if they do, and you assume $300,000, $300,000 gallons, we'd expend about $19,000, over $19,000, and we would bill Lebanon for over $22,000 with a revenue of under $5,000. So it's not a money-making endeavor, but we're not going to lose money or finance Lebanon's biosolids handling. So staff recommends councils enter into an IGA with Lebanon to haul their excess solids from their wastewater treatment plant to the Albany Reclamation Facility. Are there any questions?
Question of staff. In years gone by, we had a rocky road with Lebanon over some issues. How's it going now?
Those are, I think things are going well as far as the, our relationship. I know that those rocky roads were with the canal and other things out of my area. But my, Kristin probably talked to this. I see her wanting to speak.
It's fine. Yeah. So the canal IGA's we negotiated, and we have a great relationship with them now.
Having a good one, keeping a good one is a good thing.
Kristin, does, if Coffin-Bute, you know, raises the rates and stuff, you know, which they have done, does this take into consideration that? I mean, if they go up a whole bunch, will, is it inherent where you can kind of adjust it?
Yeah, we've included an assumed increase for the landfill. If it's, if they come to us with some, you know, outlandish increase, then we probably would have to revisit this. But that is included in the future cost.
Yeah, because so if you're right now, so you don't know. All right. Thank you.
You have a resolution on page 255.
Motion for the adoption of the resolution.
Okay. Sir, second?
Second. Third.
All right. Any more discussion?
I'm kind of curious. It's probably in the memo here, but we're taking their crap and then taking it to the dump. And why don't they just take it directly? Do we get a better deal for them if we take it?
No. The issue is that they, they fully treat their solids, but they're liquid, and they have to hold them in the winter time, and they can, they apply them in the summertime. They're only allowed to apply them to their fields in the summertime. So they get kind of in a bind in the winter where they're holding things. And so that's when the emergency hauling comes in. They don't have the de-watering facilities that we do, so the landfill won't accept the liquid waste. So we are the, we dewater it and then take it if they choose to use it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Kristin. Okay, next, starts on page 260. This is your citizen advisory groups. These are for the upcoming appointments.
Yeah, I move that we approve the mayor's and some of his council papers' appointments to new appointments and also reappointments. And I'm pleased to say that all of my appointments are reappointments. So apparently, they enjoy working with our city staff, and I think that's a good, so I'd move to appoint them all.
Okay.
I would second that with the deletion of the Landmarks Commission. If you're willing to do that.
You have to amend it, wouldn't you?
In that case, I will not, I withdraw my motion.
So you want to withdraw it? You said?
Yeah. Yeah. Landmarks needs to be reappointed. And the point here, there's a question.
Okay. So the motion's been withdrawn.
Yep.
So is there a motion?
I, I move that we approve all of them with the exception of the Landmarks Commission.
I'll second that, just for the sake of discussion.
Okay. Motion's been made, and there's a second and discussion.
So I thought staff was going to come back with some information on that, and maybe it's not tonight, but I guess maybe a staff update.
Go ahead.
Oh, what? No. No. Would we, if you would like us to return at a later date, it'll take some looking into what functions remain for the Landmarks Commission or how, you know, how you, what the impacts of not appointing them this evening are. Or if there are other resolutions to the concerns that you have. At the staff level, we are concerned about the fact that the Landmarks Advisory Commission has land use authority, and yet they're still labeled advisory. We can fix that. It'll take some, some time to fix that. But that's a question that has to be looked into a little bit. And also, you have to determine the other opportunity is to remove the land use authority from the commission, and then they would just carry on with their chartered responsibilities for historic preservation. Let me, you know, I took a, if you don't mind, if you'll indulge me, I went back to December 3rd when Marilyn presented you with the functions of each of the commissions. And I'll just remind you that, and you heard a little bit from Cameron about the history of the commission. It began as the Museum Commission in 1974. It had historic advisory and added to the name in 1979. And at that point, it was renamed the Landmarks Advisory Commission. Dick could probably narrate all of this by heart.
I made a big mistake in the way that.
They were given additional responsibilities in 1988. And then in 89, Albany became a certified local government in the National Park Service Federal Preservation Program. Certification requirements include appointing residents to serve on a historic preservation commission. Okay? And then in September of 2000, there was an ordinance 5463 that granted the LAC as decision-making authority for new construction, exterior alteration, additions, and demolitions for buildings in the historic district and on the local historic inventory. So if, if there's anything that you are looking into in terms of changing any of that, we're happy to do that. It'll take a little bit of research to come back and talk about what the impacts are.
But that does not keep them from doing the work. We're only talking about one person here, Al Seto.
I think there's two.
Well, there's two.
Well, Rich is right. As I pointed out last meeting, if, if no one is appointed, the existing members stay on the committee until they're replaced. But the two people are reappointments, so it's a moot point. They're going to continue to serve whether they're appointed or not.
So you might as well just appoint the whole slate, and then if the council wants to look at changes, and that would give time during the year to make any changes. And then that way, when it comes to the next outreach next fall, then, then, you know, folks that are applying would be following with any changes of the rules.
Or we can just pass what's here now.
Or we can just let it ride the way it is and just let it go?
Well, I think, I think in this case, I agree with the mayor that it's not going to make much difference. What needs to happen is, is that we review what, what they do, and we can also discuss, you know, how they're appointed and what their duties are and the legal responsibilities and so forth and so on. Unless we, unless we, you know, unless there's four votes to just dismiss everybody from the commission, commission and start from scratch, you know, with all new appointees, I don't think you're going to see any, any folks for probably another two years, maybe.
You're talking about a couple of months before staff would be able to come back with?
Yeah. So, you know, I think a better approach might be to look at their responsibilities and consider options of how they're made up. You know, the suggestion was have some people from all the wards.
Ward 1A, I think I had to get the first appointment.
You know, and there's, we need to think outside the box a little bit. We could have a requirement that they be appointed from different wards, but the mayor still gets to make all the appointees. You know, the idea is to get a cross-section from the community. I don't care how that's, how that occurs. That's a little different than the way you're thinking, Rich, because I understand you're, when you're saying that, you know, the appointees come from the mayor, they're all, in theory, are thinking the same way the mayor. That may or may not be, and it's kind of hypothetical. But I guess what I'm saying is there's room for thought and discussion on how they make up some of these commissions.
Bottom line here, we have a broken system. I mean, you have had members of this commission calling people names, calling people names on television, which reflects on the rest of us. I mean, this is not something you, you don't, you know, if you're on a commission, and I'm reminded of when I'm at the county, anytime I, I stand up at the county, it's my name that I am there as an individual, that I am not representing the council. I mean, you know, even though it's just me there. You should make sure everybody knows it's just this person. That's it. It's your own idea. And that isn't what we had. What we had were people being called liars and yada, yada, yada. It's just not, you know. I want to make sure that people understand that's not acceptable conduct. And, you know, I understand that staff has a, a program being promulgated to deal with this. But I think a couple of, a couple of months with something hanging over is not a bad thing. It's a reminder.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Can we not hold these people hostage that we've already appointed? Get this done and then send it and go about researching what we want to do next? Because these people have volunteered, accepted the responsibility of taking on these new assignments. I think it's wrong of us to hold them up. Let's just get it done and then have Peter and the staff work on next steps, or at least investigate next steps.
So are you talking the whole bunch?
Yeah. I'm talking the whole bunch. Because we're not going to solve it today. We're not going to solve it next week until.
Heck, we can't solve the ADU issue. How the heck we going to solve it?
Well, grown folks need to sit down and have a conversation about this whole process and get these people, take, stop holding them up.
And the decision eventually is going to come from the council. I mean, the staff will make a recommendation, but the council's going to need to, to decide on how we move forward with, with the responsibility. And just, and Peter gave a little bit of history, and I did a little bit of research too on this. And most historic, they're, they're given different names. We have the Landmarks Commission, some are Historic Review Committees, they're called different things throughout the state. Almost all of them have people that are made up, that, of, of members that are well-versed in historic preservation, that are, that really have a passion for that. And a lot of them have requirements that they have to have experience to be on that board. Almost all of them are appointed exclusively by the mayor. Where we differ is that almost all of them are advisory. They do not make final decisions. And in 2000, and I believe it was probably because at that time of development, our planning commission and our city council was overwhelmed, the council delegated authority to the Landmarks Commission at that time to make final land use decisions. And I think therein lies the rub we're having right now. Because if you, like I said, if you look at most committees, most of these, these committees, they are appointed by the mayor, and they all have a lot of background. But they serve like a planning commission would in a, like a rezoning, for example. Take the Winkler property is a good example. The Winkler, the Winkler development in North Albany, they went to planning commission, and the planning commission made a recommendation to council to either approve or deny that. And then that was brought to council, and council made the ultimate decision on whether to approve or deny it. But it was the council's decision. The planning commission didn't make it, and then it had to get appealed. And that's originally what the commit, the Landmarks Commission did. And then into, around 2000, they started making those decisions for the council. And I think that's where the, the rub is. But anyway, that's what we're going to be looking into and bringing back so that the council can make a decision on how they want to proceed with that.
And which that refreshes my memory, because back in 2000, and I think that might have been the OSP issue, and Dick would remember it too, is they would appeal, and then it would come back and appeal, and it was very time-consuming what was spent, you know, for, you know, a long time just on that one, you know, property. So that's why it gave authority to the Landmarks to take on that load, so.
But something that Sean just said kind of backed up what Rich has been saying. We all have appointees to the planning commission who's making land use decisions. Yet we don't have appointees to Landmarks who's making land use decisions. And I think that's part of the rub. Anyway, I can withdraw my second. And so that leaves the motion hanging unless there's another second.
What was the original motion?
To approve the whole slate but Landmarks. Okay. I don't see another second, so is there another motion?
So I would go back with Dick's motion and approve everybody.
Who's the whole second?
You'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made in a second, two seconds. And any more discussion on that? And that's for the whole slate.
I think staff got the message. We need to keep this on the radar, and I think we can.
Get it approved before the next appointment next year.
I think we can brainstorm it and come up with some ideas and suggestions. We got two or three different directions to go.
Okay.
So just one more question. So is it an advisory committee or not? I mean.
It's, it's called an advisory committee, but currently, it's not just an advisory committee.
I go back to the Signor, the three houses.
Right. It's definitely not advisory. It's, they're making final decisions because they are being appealed.
And remember that that's, that's one of the, the rubbing points. And there's a couple of others, statements of economic interest and.
Right.
And then also the appointment process, matching that of the planning commission. So these, these can all be fixed. It just depends on which way the council wants to go. If you want to keep it, if you want to keep land use authority with the commission, then we have to make some changes. If you want to remove land use authority, then we make different changes.
Yeah, because I was just wondering, I would think anyone who wants to be on, on the committee could read the book that David had and learn, you know, and do it. I don't, you know, it just seems like there should be maybe a more of a variety than just all historic interest. It's all the same. But I think it could be fixed too. I think we just need to discuss it and take care of it.
Okay. Motion's been for the whole, to approve the whole slate. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. Do you want roll call? Or did you get that?
Is that only Rich voted no?
Probably.
I didn't vote.
Well, you better call roll, then he has to vote.
Then he has to vote.
Olson?
Yes.
Sykes?
No.
Johnson?
Which one?
Bessie Johnson.
I'm going to say no.
Kellum?
No.
Alex Johnson?
Aye.
Coburn?
Yes.
That's three to three. Olson, Alex Johnson, and Coburn voted yes. Sykes, Bessie Johnson, and Kellum voted no.
Okay. And all vote yes. So should have kept it as the, the voice, it was a five-one, instead of the roll call. There was only one no first time. I think there was some switch in the votes there. Okay. With that, that is approved. And with that, we will go to the next item, which is adoption of the strategic plan. And this starts on page 290.
Mayor, can we?
Yep.
Can you ask for action on the memo about appointing Kellum to the hospital facility?
Oh, thank you. Thank you for reminding me.
I don't know. I don't know if I have time for that.
I thought we did.
Come on, I did my turn.
I did mine before.
What page was that on?
So this was that hospital facility authority, and this was, you needed to make a motion to appoint Rich on it to add another counselor to that.
I would move that we put Counsel Kellum on the hospital authority board for whatever's called.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Opposed, same sign. Maybe we should have a roll call, huh?
So, I'm not on this one?
So, okay. You got it?
You want to be on it?
Okay. All right.
It never meets.
All right.
It required having, huh?
Yep.
That was on the council the first time. Well, the first thing we did was get rid of the boxing and wrestling court.
Okay. Next, strategic plan. Counsel, you had this already come to you at a work session, and so, it just needs to be formally adopted, unless, Jorge, you had any other questions or any other things to point out?
No. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. We just added a brief memo to the strategic plan. We made some changes after the review on the meeting, on the work session we had on January 7th. There was some minor updates. But the strategic plan is ready to be adopted. If you have any questions, take care of them.
Okay. Any questions?
I was going to ask that it be read, but.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
We have one hour too. Get an hour and a half. I'll, I'll, I'll motion that.
Okay. And the motion's been made in a sec. Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Business from the council. Bessie, anything this evening?
I don't think so.
Okay. Bill?
I can wait.
Okay. Rich? Alex?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Mike?
We'll get it another time. It's a late night.
Okay. And the only thing I have is Peter and I are heading up to Salem early tomorrow morning for, be up all day for the legal cities for City Hall Day. And then we've got Budget Committee afterwards tomorrow night. So, don't forget that at 6:30.
I'm going to put this thing.
Okay. That's it? Peter, do you have anything?
No, the fun never stops. That's what I was going to ask.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, we're going to be going into executive session, but our next meeting is a work session on January 28th. Or did staff have anything this evening? Okay. And then February 11th is another work session, and then February 13th is City Council. So, with that.